Okay, Mayor, we are live now.
Good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, July 14th, meeting of the East Lansing City Council. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Babcock?
Lisa, you are muted. Hang on a second. Lisa, you are muted. There you go.
Councilmember Greg?
Here.
Councilmember Meadows?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Stevens?
Here.
Mayor Byer?
The next item, 1.2, is approval of the agenda. I move approval of the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Any changes to the agenda? All those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Agenda is approved. The next item, 1.3, is approval of the minutes from the regular council meeting of June 30th, 2020. I move approval of these minutes. Can I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Stevens. Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes? All those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to communications. Item 2.1 is all the written communications that council has received should be posted online in the agenda with the agenda. And there you can click on this link to see them. If you send something that did not make it to this, this package of communications, please email me or the Mayor Pro Tem and we will make sure we get that up on the internet. All right, next is 2.2, communications from the audience. So this is how we're going to do this. We passed a resolution when, a few months ago, to have all communications last a maximum of five minutes. So Ms. Gordon is going to go through all the numbers who are linked right now to the Zoom agenda. If you're, when your number is called, and she's going to use the last three numbers, is that correct, Ms. Gordon? The last three numbers in your phone. You can either speak or you can pass. And you can speak on any item on or off the agenda, but we ask that you keep your questions to, or your comments to five minutes. If you have a particular question that you want a council member to answer, then that does not count towards your five minutes. We will just keep track of those answer, those questions and answer them when you are finished. All questions should be to council members, not to staff. So with that, Emily, will you please call the first number? I'm going to step away and grab a pencil. Go ahead.
Okay, the first number will be caller ending in 194. And you are now permitted to-
Thank you. Thank you. Before I begin, I noticed Agenda 6.1, consideration of the city attorney contract. Councilmember Babcock, could you please share what the termination of Mr. Yaden's contract would cost taxpayers? Also, how much would it cost taxpayers for city council to hire an attorney who will be more pliable to the city council's political agenda? During the meeting on June 30th, my questions were ignored despite following the recommended procedure as detailed to me by Mayor Byer. I understand that you prefer to only respond to citizen questions that align with your political agenda. However, I will try again. It is truly a terrifying time to live when the mayor so egregiously attacks a decorated officer and wages a war on the finest men and women who pledged to serve and protect our community, when Mayor Byer instigates hatred in a manner that could only parallel that of President Trump. To city council, have you had any conversations or made any requests or directed Mr. Lahanas to contact the Ingham County Prosecutor's Office regarding the case of Mr. Loggins regarding charges being dismissed? Mr. Yaden, I would appreciate if you could answer the following questions for me. Did Mr. Lahanas, Mayor Byer, or anyone from your office or city council contact you to discuss the case involving Mr. Castillo and/or request charges against him be dismissed? Is there any sort of rule, policy, regulation, or city charter prohibiting the mayor, mayor's office, or city council directing you or your assistants to dismiss charges? How long have you worked in the capacity as East Lansing city attorney? And how many times in your tenure have you been asked directly either by city manager or city council to dismiss charges? Again, this question was previously posed, but I don't think we've heard the answer. What criteria does city council use to direct the city attorney to dismiss charges? Is it only assault charges, or does city council elect to request that felony charges be dismissed against more vicious criminals? And what's the criteria, or how does city council determine which criminals are the greatest threat to our community? To the Mayor Pro Tem, city council has the ability to hire and fire all individuals in positions of power and has demonstrated a lack of regard for their own rules and charter. Who oversees city council? My final question is for the mayor. Due to your demonstrated inability to follow the rules set forth in the city charter, and as citizens who fear for the safety of our families and the welfare of our future, will you resign as mayor, or do we need to petition to recall you? Will city council members also resign? I will yield the rest of my time in order to leave time for you to respond to my questions. Thank you, and please continue to support the police officers who serve and defend our precious city.
Thank you for calling in. Would anybody like to respond? Councilmember Stevens?
I'll respond to the, the questions posed to me. I believe you'd said, Mayor Pro Tem, the city council has the ability and power to oversee, or I believe you used the actual fire, positions of power within the city. The only positions the city council hires are the city attorney and the city manager. And the next question was, who oversees city council? That was directed directly at me, and I will say, the people of East Lansing oversee city council through an electoral process.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to respond? All right, Ms. Gordon, the next number, please.
The next number will be caller number ending in 339.
Hello? Am I good to go?
You're good to go.
All right. As a concerned citizen, I'd like to voice my opinion on the recent city council's ideas to defund or reallocate funds from the police department. Looking back to July of 2018, council approved the reduction of police officers and their budget cuts. In August the same year, citizens of East Lansing voted in a 12-year tax proposal that would avoid further reductions of police staff, according to the city council, and would also allocate 20% of the tax to the police and fire department. I realize that the city council members are voted in and are expected to do what is in the best interest of the city and its citizens. I am asking you, have you asked the citizens where they stand on the plan of reallocating funds that they voted to the police department? And Ms. Greg, I'd like to ask you, are any of the funds from the arts and parts and recreation going to be relocated? Next, in one of the previous council meetings, Mr. Stevens made a recommendation that there would be guidelines set for traffic stops in the city. When an officer is obtaining their degree, they learn the laws of the state, and I believe that they are well-versed in what a traffic stop offense that justifies being stopped. These stops are not just for the petty violation. They are for multiple benefits. You hear so many times, a minor traffic stop leads to the arrest of someone that has a warrant, or they're driving under the influence. This stop could not only save their life, but the lives of our families. I am proud of the job that the East Lansing police officers do and their dedication to the city shows. This brings me to the next question regarding a statement that Mayor Byer made regarding traffic stops of African-Americans, which are accounting for approximately 20% of the officer-initiated contact, while they're only making up 8% of the East Lansing population. I would welcome any member to help me understand this statement. Is it only the residents of East Lansing that have contact with the police department? I personally don't think any of you will have an explanation because this doesn't make any sense. Using the census data with contact percentages isn't a comparable option. So now, if you decide to reduce reasons for traffic stops, this will decrease incoming revenue, which will lead to shortcomings in future projected budgets. So this, along with the reallocation of police funds, will lead to more problems than anticipated. Recently, Kaylee McEnany, the White House Press Secretary, stated that when LA announced they would be defunding their police department, their homicide rate increased 250%. This isn't something that anyone wants to see in East Lansing. Finally, the police chief, Steve Gonzalez, has implemented some excellent changes in the department, so why don't we let him go forth and prove the already outstanding police department? I'm a firm believer that we need to let people run their departments as they have the skills to do so. In closing, I would like to offer one suggestion. I would like each and every one of you to spend some time on some police ride-alongs so you can personally understand what these officers experience every day, putting their lives on the line to protect us, because this possibly could change your viewpoint. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to respond to a few of the things that you said. First of all, we have had a lot of calls to reallocate funds from the police department to something else. We have not made any decisions to do that. What we, as a council, think, I think, my reading of the council, is that we want to do is reallocate the police work away from armed officers to people who are still in the police department. So we may well have the same exact budget that we have before, but they just won't be armed officers. We will, and, and of course, none of these decisions have been made. I think that we are forming a consensus that says that for quite a few things that police do now, there are other people, other, otherly trained people who might do those things better. But I agree, we need a strong police force and we need to be protected. The idea of changing what we do with a minor traffic stop, and I agree that there are a lot of benefits to a traffic stop. You can find people who have done other things. The problem is, because of our history, when a person of color gets pulled over, it is traumatic for them. And we can't change that. We can't say, well, it shouldn't be. Our police aren't going to do anything. Because of the way the world is, in, in the United States, because of the way we brought black people to this country against their will, and have basically not changed a whole lot since then, people of color are afraid of the police. And you can deny that, I guess, but, so the fewer times we have to pull somebody over, and also, young people are afraid of the police. I had a long talk with my son about this when he was in college, and still today, he's still relatively long, we're young, when you get pulled over, it's traumatic. So if we can reduce the trauma without changing how safe we are, I think we need to look at it. Again, it's not something that we've decided on, for sure. The next thing, we never police for revenue. If we have less revenue because we don't police as much, we just have to deal with that. And then finally, the idea of taking Chief Gonzalez's ideas and going forth, we might do that. We have not decided. Council is going to have a retreat. We're going to talk to people in the community. We're going to talk to people of color. We're going to talk to people like you, and we're going to go forward. So I understand your point. I don't disagree with all of it, and we will go forward from there. Would anybody else like to answer? Councilmember Stevens? Councilmember Greg? After Councilmember Stevens?
Thank you very much. I think the mayor hit on a lot of really, really great points. The, the one point that I will make, because it was directed, I guess somewhat directly at me, was, was talking about policies on, on traffic stops. And I just wanted to point to one policy that the city of Lansing did recently. I, you know, I heard from our, from our city manager, as well as the deputy chief on, you know, this issue. I think the rest of the council did as well, but really, you know, not pulling people over for secondary traffic violations, so that don't have a relationship with traffic safety. So, you know, you're talking about cracked windshield, loud exhaust, inoperable license plate lamp, cracked taillights, you know, dangling ornaments or window treatment, and then reevaluating the use of lean to the law enforcement information network to not be able to scan license plate without, you know, an articulable or a non-bias public safety reason. So, you know, I think that that's, that's kind of one of those things where you, you think about public safety, and then you think about, you know, what we're doing right now, and, and there might be a little bit of a gap. And I don't think that what Lansing did was, was, you know, crazy. I, I don't think that, that it really hurts, you know, our, our safety in a sense for our community. I think it's just, you know, a change in policy for probably the better. So that, you know, that's what I'm talking about when I talk about, you know, traffic stops and, and the use of lean and different things. And again, I, I talk about, you know, some things in terms of custodial arrests versus appearance tickets, but that's a separate issue, so.
Councilmember Greg?
There was a question that was specifically addressed to me, so I thought I would address that. Before I answer it, I want to say that I think that there's a misunderstanding of what defunding the police means. I think there's an, sort of an assumption that it means taking away police budget, which functionally, yes, but anything we take out of the police department, we are replacing with something else within the sphere of public safety. So it is not a reduction in public safety. It is a reallocation to a different type of safety system, which we are, which nothing has been done to create that yet. I believe we're taking one step in that direction tonight when we see the city manager's presentation in terms of, so, so I think, you know, the question of, are we going to reallocate arts funding is sort of a false dichotomy. We are not reallocating public safety funding to anything that is not public safety related. So, no, at this point, this $17,500 that's dedicated to the arts in East Lansing is not going anywhere.
Mayor, you're muted.
Sorry, I, I'm going to have to keep muting because I am at a place where there is some noise, so just go like this. I have need to be unmuted. Thank you. The next number, please, Emily.
The next number will be caller ending in 753. 753, you are now permitted to talk.
Good afternoon. I'm Edmund Rushton. We've spoken many times before. I've, I've noticed a few people calling in and asking questions about the arrest of Mr. Castillo on February 9th, I believe was the date. And I, I think it's important at this time that we revisit the events to come of that arrest, which do not just include what happened to Mewana Castillo. It also includes what happened to Anthony Zarwia and Damian Lee. I know, Madam Mayor, that there have been questions from colleagues of ours and concerned citizens around the community about the charges against Mr. Zarwia from that arrest. Can you clarify for me right now what the charges are against Anthony Zarwia from the February 9th arrest?
If that's your only question I can, if you have more, I will write that down and answer when you're finished.
Well, I, I, it's important to me that I know what the charges are before I ask my next question, just so I have context.
Okay, good. Mr. Yaden, will you describe how, what you described to me about what your plan is for that? And Emily, will you stop? Oh, you did.
Yes, Mr. Zarwia was, was charged originally by the East Lansing Police Department with three charges. One for disorderly conduct, for disturbing the peace, the other one for, for fighting, the other for assault and battery, and the third for resisting arrest. Mr. Lee was charged with just the one count for, for disorderly conduct, fighting. Again, those are all issued by the East Lansing Police Department. We have tendered a plea agreement offer to both of them, which is exactly the same, which is deferring just one count with Mr. Zarwia. It's one count of his choice. Mr. Lee, it's just the only count that's pending, and then-
A count of his choice. So the, there are charges against Mr. Zarwia that have not been dropped yet.
Well, they, they've been part of a plea bargain offer that I think has been accepted.
Well, that greatly disappoints me. In the history of criminal justice policy in this country, plea bargains are much less efforts to gain the truth and much more efforts to cover for misconduct in our criminal justice system. And I see a lot of that going on with the arrest of Mr. Zarwia. Do you know why Mr. Zarwia was charged with many more counts than the man who started the fight with Mr. Zarwia, the white man, Damian Lee? Because the, the night of the arrest, Damian Lee was the instigator of the fight, as we found, and yet, Mr. Zarwia, the man who was attacked by Mr. Lee, is charged with three times the amount of charges as Mr. Lee. So it's very clear that the police want to make this look as though Mr. Zarwia was the aggressor in this fight. I think that would fit for a much more comfortable political narrative. Now, was it Officer Horn's police report that provided the necessary supposed evidence to charge Mr. Zarwia with assault and battery, disorderly conduct, and disturbing the peace as well as resisting? It was Mr. Officer Horn's report that resulted in that arrest?
So that would be a question for the chief, not for Mr. Yaden. Do we have the chief on, Mr. Lahanas?
Yes, Steve should be available. Steve, are you available to answer that question? He's in the attendee side, so someone may have to unmute him.
I see him. I see him. There we go. Did you hear the question, Mr. Gonzalez?
I did. So it was the, all of the police reports that were, were written based on that incident. There was Officer Horn's police report, and then subsequent supplemental reports as well that were used to document that incident and then issue the charges. The charges were issued by the officers themselves with citations the night of the incident.
Thank you. Is that, is that your final question, sir?
No. I have a further question here. It seems as though it took much longer to take any actions regarding the charges against Mr. Zarwia, as it did the, the charges against Mr. Castillo, which is understandable. Mr. Castillo was harmed by a police officer, whereas Mr. Zarwia was just arrested, and there is more clear evidence of charges needing to be leveled against Mr. Zarwia. However, there is no evidence of Mr. Zarwia needing to be charged or offered guilty pleas to charges that are much more hefty than the man who attacked Mr. Zarwia in that 7-Eleven. And I, I suppose, my final question is, has a, a plea deal already been accepted? You don't have to give me the details of it, but Attorney, City Attorney Yaden is saying that a plea deal has already been accepted by Mr. Zarwia's lawyers?
What he said, he thinks at this point, it has been accepted.
Well, if it has been accepted, I would recommend to all of you, in the discussion portion, in the agenda item regarding Mr. Yaden's contract, I would recommend to all of you that you move for that contract to be terminated. If a plea deal has already been accepted and Mr. Zarwia has been forced to accept charges that should not be leveled against him, the, the failure of our community's criminal justice system has already been set in stone then. We can't undo a guilty plea being accepted. So I think at this time, this is no longer a miscarriage of justice. This is a systemic problem rooted in our inability to sentence people properly and to offer people the right charges. This is, this is something that I think we'll have to revisit a lot in the coming weeks, and I think it would be detrimental to the discussion that the city clearly needs to have about sentencing reform, that the person responsible for the faults in our sentencing abilities is still part of the discussion. I think that there is a, a large discussion we need to have going forward. It's not about just police on the streets, but about lawyers and courts and our legal system. And if we're going to have that conversation and be comprehensive about it, we can't have somebody who's part of the discussion covering for their ass their whole time. So that's all I have to say. I, I hope that you take this discussion about Mr. Yaden's contract seriously, because I think he has done a, a great disservice to this community, and I am ashamed to call him my city attorney.
Hey, would anybody like to respond? All right, Ms. Gordon, the next number, please.
Okay, the next number will be the caller ending in 534. You may now address council.
This is Ann Hill at 685 Buteo. I'd like to voice my support for the Clean Water State Revolving Fund project plan. This plan will continue the progress that's been made to improve the integrity, performance, and efficiency of our overall stormwater and sewer systems to limit the risk of having stormwater and sewage particles going into the environment and the Red Cedar River. It is critical to preserve this infrastructure. Additionally, stormwater and sewage due to the combined sewer systems that run south of Saginaw and north of the Red Cedar River may result in flooding of basements with bacteria and contaminants potentially harming our residents and environment. Some of this infrastructure was built in the 1920s and is failing. There have been several instances over the last few years where road repair work was being done and the sewer system infrastructure collapsed, resulting in a much higher overall cost for the project and plan. I give a lot of credit to our DCW staff who've been working diligently to be proactive in figuring out ways to minimize these overall failures in our aging system. I understand that this project will be costly. However, I also believe it is a high priority item that impacts the majority of East Lansing residents. While it is not a public drinking water system crisis like Flint's, it is a public infrastructure system, and we can learn from Flint's planning and spending failures as we address our own system. If sewer and stormwater infrastructure failures occur, it could be harmful to our public health. To help pay for this project, in addition to the proposed funding option, I urge city council and staff to reprioritize funding away from some of the nice-to-have projects that benefit the few and shift those monies to projects such as this that would proactively benefit the many in East Lansing. The taxpayers of East Lansing do not have unlimited financial resources. For you to continually come to us seeking more and more funding is not financially or morally responsible. There is a limit. As you will remember, in 2018, the voters of the city of East Lansing finally approved an income tax only after specific limitations were included. That income tax had three specific components, along with a 10-year, 12-year expiration timeframe. 60% to pension payments, primarily police and fire, 20% to police and fire protection, and 20% infrastructure improvements. Per the ballot language, 20% for the maintenance and improvement of streets and sidewalks, water and sewer systems, and parks and recreation, and city-owned facilities. There is no stipulation within these infrastructure items that each be funded in a certain manner, and it is the responsibility of council and staff to prioritize and approve spending of these various types of infrastructure funds. Over the past 20 years, East Lansing has spent millions of dollars, both in grants and taxpayer-funded matches, to acquire large quantities of land with subsequent significant capital investments for parks and recs and to develop these properties. Some of these investments have been to, to benefit small organizations and special interest groups and are not designed for the majority of East Lansing's residents to use or benefit from, even though we all pay for them through our taxes. Due to this massive unchecked expansion of our park system, East Lansing is now unable to pay for the day-to-day operating expenses to maintain these acquisitions and developments without going begging for more grants and looking for additional schemes whereby residents and businesses and those employed within the city limits to pay for them. Why on earth are you considering spending additional taxpayer money on nonessential areas, given the shortages that you already face? When do you begin to balance the city's checkbook and not just ask us for more checks? Don't get me wrong, I enjoy parks and recs as much as the next person, but we need to pay attention to how much we are spending on essential and nonessential items and understand the future costs to maintain these purchases. Clearly, during this pandemic period, we have found that some of these parks are nonessential, as they've been closed down for the summer, and we are all learning that our streets and sidewalks are just as good for getting some exercise and fresh air. Parks and rec land acquisition and capital improvements should be on hold until we can afford it. We do not want to get ourselves in another crisis situation like we have with unfunded pensions. With the impacts of the pandemic, this is going to be a challenge for at least a couple of years. The financial decisions that you make now will have significant consequences for our future. Even though you may not be in office when it hits, we, the people of East Lansing, will be. Again, I urge you to approve this project and furthermore, temporarily shift spending away from parks and recs and nonessential investments until our financial position improves and to fund our sewer and stormwater systems, along with our major and local roads. Thank you.
Thank you. The next caller, please, Ms. Gordon?
Okay, the next caller will be caller number ending in 660. 660, you are now permitted to address council.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay. Hi, Prashik Kumar here, and I would like to first thank you guys for answering my call. First, I want to touch Mr. Yaden, and I want to clearly state that we have lost trust and confidence in Mr. Yaden's ability to fulfill the duties and expectations of disposition. Rasp decision-making, such as the case of Mr. Zarwia, does not help build trust in an office that's already suffering. Simply put, Mr. Yaden must go. We saw the evidence that was presented to us by the East Lansing Police Department. It was- It was Mr. Lee that went into that 7-Eleven to harass Mr. Gassito and his brother Anthony. It was Mr. Lee that assaulted Anthony first by pushing Anthony in which he lost control and he fell down. But if you look at the police report, it says Mr. Lee pushed rather than assaulted. I don't understand how someone who started this whole problem was given, was only charged with disorderly conduct, but the person who has been assaulted was charged with multiple charges such as assault and battery, disturbing the peace, and resisting arrest. It is very clear to me that Mr. Yaden is biased. It is very clear to me that Mr. Yaden cannot do his job and the fact that he's getting paid $650,000 a year, he makes more than the President of the United States of America. He makes more than the Vice President of the United States of America. Hell, he makes more than the Speaker of the House. For what? What has he done for this city? Mr. Yaden must go. No exception. His contract, we don't need to reconstruct his contract. We don't need him to give us a discount. We want him gone. And I am asking all of you to get rid of him within 72 hours. Five months ago, I sat before you guys and told you guys that if I don't see structural change with meaningful reform, that I will call for the boycott of East Lansing. That is a promise that I am willing and I am going to keep that promise. We have not seen structural change with meaningful reform yet and Mr. Yaden poses a big problem to this community. Today is your chance to make that correction. Mr. Yaden must go. The city of East Lansing and their local businesses are already suffering from COVID-19. The last thing you guys want me to do is hold a press conference and say that the city of East Lansing is unsafe for African-Americans and lay out the evidence that I have against you guys. That is the last thing your citizens want to see. I am calling on you guys to fire Mr. Yaden within 72 hours. If you guys do it tonight, even better, but Mr. Yaden must go. Thank you.
Thank you. Emily, is there, can you please give us the next number?
Absolutely. The next number will be caller ending in 534. You are now permitted to address counsel.
I've already had a chance to speak.
Thank you.
All right, the next number will be caller ending in 963. You are now permitted to address counsel.
Hi, this is Alice Digger from 621 Sunset Lane. Just a quick note following up on something that Ann Hill said. She is correct, of course, that the 20% for parks and rec and infrastructure do not specify what it should go to within that 20%. So counsel has the discretion to decide on behalf of the taxpayers. In the same sense, the 20% that was designated for police, fire, and public safety does not actually say what it's supposed to go for. It has counsel discretion. And one of the things I wanted to ask counsel to do is to consider the possibility of addressing the sobriety problem in East Lansing, particularly on big game days. There are cities that are doing sobriety centers for that kind of problem and that's something that I think could help us a lot and also help take pressure off of our hospitals. Some other cities have done such things. That's not the main reason I called, though. The main reason I called is with regard to the bond, the Center City Bond. I realize you all will not have had a chance to see the Miller Canfield memo for tomorrow for the special BRA meeting, but what it says basically is that the $56 million number is operative from the opinion of Miller Canfield. It also indicates you can, or the BRA can, pay originating costs out of the bonds. What this basically means is that we have a fundamental problem with regard to this bond. The city council, particularly Ruth Byer, who has been a council member, not mayor, but she put in an amendment to the authorizing resolution for the bond that specifically limited the use of the TIF very strictly to environmental cleanup and public infrastructure and only paying for that and only paying for interest on that. It was a really great move that provided a cost control measure that was very strong and it meant it limited the TIF payout to $50 million. Now we hear from Miller Canfield, their reading of the paperwork is that it allows for $56 million. I think it's safe to say that the paperwork doesn't match up, that the paperwork is kind of a mess. And this is upsetting because it means that we're probably going to have to do some sort of payout beyond what that council intended, what that council specifically voted for, which was a limit on the TIF of $50 million. I just want to remind you that the council voted through that, that master development agreement and also voted through the, that resolution on the TIF that limited the TIF to $50 million on June 20th. But it wasn't until October 31st that the master development agreement was signed by then-mayor Mark Meadows. That means our lawyers had four months to make all the paperwork match. And when you look at the master development agreement, what you find is that it has other kinds of minor problems in it. It has things like sections of it still marked Dykema draft. Dykema is the attorney for the other side, for the developers. It also has lines that were supposed to be filled in that were never filled in. We had four months for our council to fix the master development agreement to make sure that it absolutely adhered to what council had intended. Councilors, our elected representatives, and Mayor Byer, former Mayor Meadows, worked really hard to make sure there were cost control measures in there. And now we're discovering that that cost control measure to make sure we didn't pay more than we intended on the parking garage may not be able to be adhered to. So it's frustrating to me. The council voted through it on June 20th. The master development agreement was not signed by Mr. Meadows until October 31st. And then the bond didn't close until December 13th, which means we basically had six months for our lawyers to make sure that all the paperwork matched. And that didn't happen. And now Mr. Danoff is, I think, protecting his own firm by saying it's the $56 million number because that's what he wrote into the trust indenture, so he needs to say that that's the case in order to protect his own firm. This is depressing and I'm one of the people that found some of the errors in the original master development agreement. For example, a party to the contract, or rather, somebody was not a party to the contract being asked to pay $350,000 in parking fees. That was the contractor who was not a party to the contract and the city council had to go back and amend the development agreement to fix that as well as to fix other things. The DDA has now moved, as you know, to hire independent specialist counsel on development deals, but we need to make sure we don't make $6 million mistakes. The, the thing that just happened could cost us $6 million in tax dollars that the council never intended to have spent. And that is really depressing to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gordon, can you read the next number, please?
Okay. The last phone number that we have before will be caller ending in 579. You may now address counsel.
Thank you. I have several questions or statements and I see that the first caller never got her questions answered by Mayor Byer now for a second time. So I'm sure some of mine will be ignored as well. Mayor Byer, you were elected to council in 2013. You were mayor pro temp from 15 to 17 and you were re-elected in 2017. And then 2019, you were re-elected as mayor. I find it really disturbing that in all that time you didn't find time to ride, do a ride-along with the police and find out what their job is and get to know some of the outstanding officers that you guys have in East Lansing that we have. I want to know where your priorities are. That's a huge part of the city that gives services to your citizens as long, as well as the fire department. My next question is, I would like to know if any of you are subject matter experts in use of force. And if so, and if not, then I would like to know if you've had any formal training in use of force. I'm assuming that both of the, the answers to those questions are going to be no. I find it very disturbing that after two separate investigations of Officer Stevenson, you can still sit there and say that you don't trust the investigation. What you guys have done to that officer is unforgivable. You've made it not safe for him, his family, or other officers working in the city of East Lansing. The actions you guys have taken, the city will see for years. Also, I'm assuming that you guys are all, have a code of conduct since you worked for the city. You basically threatened Officer Stevenson when you said it was not over for him or for any other officer, as a matter of fact, I think is how you worded that, Mayor Byer. I'm wondering if that would be a hostile work environment because it seems pretty hostile to me. My next question is for Mayor Pro temp Stevens. I'm curious if he's ever called ELPD about a subject in his parking lot when he lived at Stonehedge and if he could elaborate what that call was about and what the race of the individual was about. Also, on the June 23rd meeting, Mr. Stevens, you made a comment that you were on a ride-along on Abbott Road and the officers either were uneducated or didn't know how to handle the call. I find it ironic that on the website where everybody's introduced as far as counsel, everybody's education is listed except yours. There's not one thing listed about your background or your education. Why is that? Have you guys done any research about the officers you have working for you? Do you know that you have one that's working on a PhD? You have at least six with master's degrees and almost everybody, if not everybody else, has a bachelor's degree? I don't think you have uneducated officers working for you, Mr. Stevens. That comment was out of line, along with several others you guys have made. On the Gassito case, I find it really interesting that Mr. Lee's charges weren't dropped. He didn't fight with the police, but Gassito did and his, his case just went away. I'd also like to know about the FOIA's that have been denied, reference to computers that were given to you by the city. I'm sure they're maintained by the city for city use. And what are you guys hiding? What do you, don't you want to get out on that FOIA? The overpolicing was already addressed by somebody else. I think, I think we've got dirty politics going on here. I'm curious as to why this was handed over to a prosecutor. They don't review use of force cases. They review criminal cases. This case is not a criminal case and should have never been referred to it, the prosecutor.
You have 30 seconds remaining.
And as far as DWS and some of these less serious crimes, Mr. Stevens, you couldn't be farther from the truth. You have no idea what officers get on traffic stops. And when officers fight or when somebody fights an officer like Mr. Loggins did, we have, they have no idea why that person is fighting. So many officers have been killed because they stopped somebody at the wrong time, right after they committed a crime, but they don't know it because they stopped them for one of those reasons.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Your five minutes is up. Councilmember Babcock, would you like to respond? Sorry, Councilmember Babcock, I can't hear you, but you don't appear to be muted either. Do you have your headphones plugged in by any chance?
Not.
Oh, there you go. I just heard that.
Thank you. I would like to say there are many things that are worth responding to from the last caller, but I want to hone in on one thing because it was a concern for me as well. First, I don't consider this laptop mine. This is the city's laptop and I, I, I think we all view these objects that way or certainly we should. I would, however, like to have the city manager or city attorney elaborate on this idea that we own the equipment and therefore there's an exemption to FOIA because that's not my understanding of exemption to FOIA. So perhaps you could elaborate for me yet again how it is you use that as an exemption. Thank you.
Mr. Yaden, would you respond to that as briefly as possible, please?
Well, my understanding from talking with the city manager regarding the laptops, there are certain electronic devices that are just given to council that aren't expected to be returned to the city. There's no restrictions on use. They're just for personal use or whatever use the council members have for them. The, the laptops themselves are not, they're not connected to the city's system in the sense that they're not city, on the, for instance, the, the documents that are on the laptops aren't also sitting on the city's servers. If you look at the Howell case, that was why those were public documents is because the documents were sitting on the, on the Howell servers. So that's the main distinction.
Thank you very much. So for example, Ms. Babcock, any email that I write on this computer is FOI-able because it's also on the city server. Councilmember Babcock.
My laptop on the city server because I'm uncomfortable with this really dubious exemption.
All right, thank you. The next item on the agenda is...
Excuse me. Excuse me, you didn't answer. I would like, I would like to hear from the city manager then, and the city attorney, what it would take to get my computer on the server because this is a really dubious exemption. It's not legal.
Councilmember Babcock, I was not ignoring you. I didn't hear the first part. I just heard the very last. I think that's what everybody heard. Mr. Mr. Lahanas, how will we, how could we make these, make these computers?
The, the distinction Mr. Yaden was making was whether it's a managed device or not. So for instance, your phones and the computers you have, if you use the web interface, all of that information is public information because it's through our servers. If you have a phone and you take a picture on your phone, that's a city-provided phone, it's not a public record because it's not saved to our computers in any respect. So it's not a record in our control. So I think that's the distinction we're making. So if, if our computers that we give to council, the laptops, we have typically in the past given tablets. A tablet is like a phone. It's used to have an interface where you can connect to the city's servers for groupwise in the past and now it's Outlook and you can write documents and you can use email and calendar. All of that information is public because it all comes onto our servers. The laptops came because council members on this round said they did not want tablets, they wanted laptops. So we purchased extremely affordable laptops that after four years are essentially obsolete. We gave them to council. If they want to give them back, that's perfectly fine. But they are not devices. A managed device means that the entire computer is connected to the backend of the city's servers and those devices are not. They are just for use as an email or document sharing device, just like a tablet and to be able to use the Granicus or the system where you are using the online agenda. So that's really what those are for, online agenda and group, and the Outlook usage. And that is all, of course, public information.
Councilmember Babcock and then Councilmember Stevens. And Mr. Meadows, did you have your hand up? Hang on, hang on, Mr. Meadows. Councilmember Babcock.
I had no idea you were going to have to purchase. I am not muted. I'm not muted. So I had no idea you were purchasing a laptop. I wouldn't have asked that of you. My understanding was that you had them and it was offered and I, certainly not my understanding, Mr. Lahanas. Thank you.
You, Councilmember Stevens.
So I, I don't have, I have, I was given a tablet at the beginning of my term right now. In fact, I'm using my own personal computer on, just because it has a webcam and it's stationary for Zoom. I don't have a city-owned phone either. When I was asked at the beginning of my term if, if I would like the city to purchase one for me, I, I thought that I didn't want to have the city spend money on, on me. If that makes folks uncomfortable, I'm, I'm happy to get a city phone that I, that I'll just use for, for only city business. I, I just genuinely didn't want the taxpayers to kind of have to pay for another cell phone bill when I, when I had a working one. If you go online, my, my phone number on there is, is my cell number and I, I respond to that. But I'd be happy to do that. Honestly, it was, it was just purely out of not wanting taxpayers to pay for a cell phone bill.
Councilmember Meadows.
I was just scratching my ear, Mayor.
Councilmember Greg.
I didn't have my hand up, but I can...
Oh, go ahead.
So the reason that I have a city cellphone is because my personal cellphone is actually also listed of my business top phone number and I did not feel that that was...
Trying to move along. Thank you.
Business phone associated with my city identity. And I do have a tablet, which I use. Anyone is welcome to any of the public information of that. It is synced with my personal Google account. It is synced with my personal Google account because I'm signed in under Chrome. And my children were using it as a device with their distance learning plan so that we did not have to borrow a device from the school district. So those are the personal things on there that I would prefer for my kids' privacy not to have shared. But anybody is welcome to any public document off of that computer, which I believe has already been FOIA'd. So, but send it again.
All right. The next item on the agenda is communications from...
We still have a few.
I thought you said that was the last number. I'm sorry.
Next number will be caller ending in 596. You can now address council.
Oh, I tried to... One moment. Sorry. I tried calling in through Zoom video link, and I guess I didn't register. Anyhow, my name is Crystal Davis. I am a resident at 1200 Wolf Court here in East Lansing. There are several things that I wanted to speak to that's on the agenda. Just the previous caller's comment around the FOIA and the devices provided to council. The information that is available, to my understanding, the information that she's requesting for FOIA is available because it's on the server. The devices, the use of it, and the personal use of it, in my opinion, should remain private to protect you guys' rights as a private citizen when you guys are not handling public business. So anyways, that's neither hand or end there. I did too want to speak to some of the concerns about the taxation with the parks and recs. There was a recent increase in the mileage. I think this speaks also further into cost in regards to like ideas of redlining and making it unaffordable for individuals of colors and minorities, families to live here, make it affordable in that regard. So I do think there needs to be some more control and oversight over how the funds are delegated and some control in the increase of taxes. Another thing, the caller asks about the definition of excessive force. And clearly, you know, that people get on these calls and are not doing their own homework. And, you know, if you simply, quite frankly, just Google the definition of excessive force, it's, you know, basically any force used that is excessive beyond what is necessary to, in a sense, gain control over a situation. Gostito being... His state being dragged across the concrete by Officer Stevenson, that was excessive force. That's why it's criminal. And the problem is with regards to the city attorney is that the practices within Lansing Police Department and the lack of disinterest of really holding a police officer accountable for their misconduct is a problem. For too long, we've allowed our officers' power to go unchecked. And that is why individuals like myself are afraid to live in this community. And so I, you know, thank you, Mayor, for bringing out that. The fact that it is traumatizing anytime we have any interaction with officers because I don't know what's that officer agenda. I don't know if me, you know, asking a question and raising my hand is going to lead to me dead over a simple traffic stop. No one's life is worth a simple citation, but people have died over it. A simple traffic stop. An officer should not be running scared, stopping people over minor... Simple traffic stop and drawing their guns on them. And so, yes, you know, people, you find people that are in fact criminals to some degree during these routine traffic stops. But again, I question, again, what led to that stop, those profiling of that. And then quite frankly, you know, crime is a construct. We decide what is good and bad, what is criminal and what's noncriminal. And right now, the public has spoken, and we've decided that Officer Stevenson, his acts were criminal. And the means does not justify the ends. We are talking about human lives, and officers are not judge and jury. They're supposed to bring people to court, to trial, to face judge and jury, not take it into their own hands. And that has been the trend around the United States. Right here in the United States. Furthermore, I did want to support reexamining Mr. Yaden's contract. I don't think that he represents the best interest of our community. I don't think that he is interested in protecting civilian rights. And so I do think there should be serious consideration when examining his contract.
Thank you very much. Your five minutes is over. Would anybody like to respond? All right, Ms. Gordon, the next number, please.
It looks like the name next is John Gentilosi. You are now permitted to address council.
Good evening, everyone. This is John, pardon me, John Gentilosi. And we are here, Paul Gentilosi as well. We're here to address item 6.2, I believe, the 3401 and 3400 West and Coolidge Road site plans. And I look forward to speaking with you later. Just wanted to let you know we're here. Thank you.
Ms. Gordon?
Okay. Looks like the next one is caller ending in 252. You are now permitted to address council. It's like they just got off. The next caller will be Rachel Sweet. You are now permitted to address council.
Pass.
Okay. The next one is George Brookover. You are now permitted to address council.
Thank you, George Brookover, office address 1005 Abbott Road. I'm here to speak on agenda item 6.6, if I'm allowed at that point in time.
It will be Mr. Brookover?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I'm sorry. You will be allowed to speak at that time?
Great. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Okay. The next person will be Patrick Levine Rose. You may now address council. You are muted still.
Rose, if you're speaking, there you go.
My goal is to do what Mr. Brookover did and speak on the later item.
All right. Thank you.
And it appears that is everyone on our list, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gordon. You did great for your first run at running the calls. Nicely done. The next item on the agenda is communication from council and the mayor. We will start with Councilmember Babcock. You are muted. There you go.
Thank you. I was going to ask a question about the FOIA process, but through the magical note, the public beat me to it, so thank you. I had no idea that was coming. Secondly, we have a huge issue before the city, which is 56 million in bonds. I'll be honest, I don't understand it. I do know it's a big deal when we start talking about $1 million in bonds for more than every resident of the city. Perhaps Mr. Lahanas or Mr. Yaden could give us an overview of what the B R A is considering?
Councilmember Babcock, have you... Did you ask them ahead of time to prepare that? Because this is not something that can be done in a short period.
They were both at the meeting last week, and I mean...
Yeah. I understand that issue.
I don't... They can't do it?
Yes, they can do it. It would be better... Okay. In the future, if it's going to be a question about the B R A, I would request that you send... This is how I do it. When Mr. Lahanas, I wanted to present something, I say, "Mr. Lahanas, I need to have this explained during the meeting," and then he can have everything in front of him. But go ahead, Mr. Lahanas. Never mind.
This is too difficult? Then don't... But I did not... This is not some sort of setup. I thought it was a good chance to explain to the public what is going on in City Hall. If city manager and city attorney don't care to do that, I just... I'll leave it up to them.
And I didn't mean to step in. Mr. Lahanas, would you like to describe this as briefly as possible? You're muted, George.
Sorry, can you hear me now? Yeah. So unfortunately, it's a very complicated issue. There are a number of documents, a B R A plan, a development agreement, lots of documents that were approved for a very complex project. All of those documents, when you line them up, don't necessarily have perfect agreement on what would have been included. So there is a little bit of dispute about which documents you should be reading and what the exact amount is. So it's not necessarily an easy thing to explain without walking you through all of the documents. There is a dispute about two particular items that are significant. One is should the fees and costs have been included in the bond issuance? So that's the city's cost for issuance of bonds and the developer's cost of issuance of bonds. Our bond counsel issued an opinion saying that he believed they rightly should be included. The contention from Mr. Edgar was they should not have been included because she's pointing to one document that council passed. So the B R A passed something else that had soft costs listed. So there's some level of conflict there. Because of that, we asked our B R A attorney or attorney to issue an opinion on that. That opinion is the letter that's sent out to council today. There's also an issue about whether the developer should be reimbursed for overages from the project. They spent about $800,000 of overages during the construction of the ramp. The development agreement talked about this issue and said that those overages would be paid to the developer in the event that after the bonds were repaid and there was time on the TIF left, a 30-year TIF plan, that those overages would be paid at that point. So Tom calls it the "end-of-the-rainbow payment." So the developer came to us and the B R A and said, "It doesn't make financial sense for you to wait 25 years to pay those payments because they accrue interest at 5% or some number like that for 25 years, and then you pay it. It makes more financial sense to pay them now." Essentially, it's like having a second mortgage on a house that you don't pay for 25 years that accrues interest. So they made the case to the B R A that those payments should be made as a part of a full bond and not wait for the 25 years to pay them because you'd pay less interest. That was the argument they made financially to the B R A, and the B R A agreed with that and approved the bonds with that additional amount. So that gets to some of the significant dispute, the fees, should they be rightly included? And this end-of-the-rainbow payment that the developer was entitled to. But the B R A believed it was more financially prudent to include those in the bond and not wait the 25 years to pay. So that's a simple look at a complex problem. If we want to go deeper than that, it would be better if I had the documents and could walk through that, which I don't have right now.
You, Councilmember Babcock?
I'll wait until we have the documents, perhaps at another meeting. Thank you.
You, Councilmember Greg? You're muted, Jesse. Sorry.
Very intellectual things. Well, I was muted. No, you didn't. I actually don't have anything specific to say today. I'm sure I'll have things to say on our very packed agenda, but I...
Thank you. Councilmember Meadows? You're muted? You are unmuted.
All right. Let me just say a couple of things. Maybe this would answer a little bit of what Lisa had asked. Yes, you know, I guess you could make the argument that including costs that by contract, by agreement, are to wait till the end to be paid, if at all. So what the deal was is that, yeah, if there are overages, they're going to be put to the end of this. They are going to earn interest, but they can only be paid if there's TIF left over. You know, if there's an amount of TIF. And what happened here was that the city council, in passing its resolution approving Brownfield Plan Number 24, said, "We're approving this Brownfield Plan, except that we're only allowing the costs, the eligible costs, to be those costs which relate to public infrastructure that are contained in a specific document exhibited in to the Master Development Agreement." And that document lists the cost. It does not include paying the developers', bond counsel, and other attorneys, their fees. And so that is the matter of dispute here. There was a subsequent approval of a bond that included those payments, but our approval also limited the TIF to around $50 million, which is the exact amount that was necessary to pay off our costs. So what they're really trying to do is get around the fact that there's a limit on the amount of the TIF that is available to pay any expenses. And it is unlikely, although I think because of the increase in the value of this property, way more valuable than we thought it was going to be, that TIF will probably... We probably would be able to pay off some of their overages with the remaining TIF. But at this point in time, there's no reason to change the deal. What they want is they want to change a deal that they signed on to, and the B R A doesn't have the authority to change that deal. Only we do. That's my position on it.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Stevens?
Thank you, Mayor Byer. I got asked a couple of questions, and I had a couple of follow-up people asking me to answer. So I'll go through and answer just a couple of brief things to the best of my ability. So previously, I made a comment about an instance during a ride-along where... And so if I misspoke and I said that, like, the officers weren't smart enough to deal with the situation, that was not my intention. Really, what I was trying to allude to is that maybe like a social worker could have helped the situation further than having an officer there responding to it as it was an issue that they had responded to several times in the past, or that was based on what the officer had told me. So if I insulted anybody with that, that really wasn't my intention. My intention was just to state that there are certain, you know, specifications and I mean certain levels of expertise on different situations that, you know, maybe a social worker is helpful for, maybe an officer's helpful for. But I mean, there are those distinctions. So the next question was about a 911 call I made. Without any more specifics, I couldn't tell you what specifically. I do remember one call that I made in relation to my parking lot. It was very late at night, and there was an argument. I can't remember the race of the individuals or if I knew it then. But there was a lot of screaming. It was about 3:00 in the morning. There was a car that was screeching on the road. And I called the police when I heard the words, and I won't repeat the last word, but I believe the words were "you abusive piece of something." And then I saw some individuals fighting around a car. And so at that point, I was fairly worried for somebody's safety, and so I did call. If that's the time that you're speaking of, then that is kind of the story. Again, it might have been a while ago. So if I'm getting details wrong, I do apologize, but that is what I remember. So that's that. And then we have other items on the agenda that we'll talk about later. So...
Thank you, Councilmember Stevens. My only comment to you, Councilmember Babcock, is next... Or I think it's this week. Councilmember Meadows is representing us in the B R A meeting. And I fully agree, and I am saying this publicly so that Mr. Lahanas also hears that the limit is $50 million. So if there are documents that disagree with each other, that's the one that we can stick to regardless of what our bond counsel says. The next item is the city manager's report and then the city attorney's report. Mr. Lahanas?
Yes, just one item, and that is to thank our own Nicole Bartel for her service in the City of East Lansing. Yes, just one item, and that is to thank our own Nicole Bartel for her service in the City of East Lansing. She is leaving us to go work in her life's pursuit and what she was professionally trained for, so congratulations to Nicole. She's been with us a short time, but she made a really positive impression on us. She really handles projects and just took things over and did a great job. So she will be missed. She made a great positive impact, and thank you, Nicole.
Thank you. Mr. Meadows and Ms. Babcock and Ms. Greg.
Well, I want to just say that it was a tremendous pleasure working with Nicole. And she's extremely organized. She did a great job with the university student commission. Really, I mean, a remarkable change between the time that I began back on council in 2015 and last year, and she really will be missed. She was terrific. Whatever job she's going to, she's going to be fantastic at. So best of luck to Nicole.
Thank you. Councilmember Babcock.
Ms. Bartel, if you're watching, you've done a fantastic job. It was an honor to be associated with you. Someday, we're going to pick up, oh, I don't know, cover the New York Times and say, "We know her. She used to work with us." So all the best to Ms. Bartel.
Thank you. Councilmember Greg, and then Councilmember Stevens.
Yeah, I just didn't want to miss my opportunity to say goodbye to Nicole. I didn't have a long time to work with you, but it was a pleasure. And, you know, these last two weeks or two months of distance remote work have not been a great way to say goodbye, but, you know, best of luck on your next endeavor, and I expect you to be great at it.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yeah, and this goes for definitely a lot of staff members. But I just, I want to point out that, you know, on numerous meetings that I've been on, whether it's commissions or city council meetings, Nicole has kind of been there to ease that transition into virtual meetings. And I think she's done it in a really, really great way. And of course, that's just kind of one thing on, I'm sure, a very long list of things that she's helped the city out with. But I would say that, you know, in the long scheme of really, really helping, really, I mean, helping us move forward in this really weird and scary time. It has been great to know that I can hop on this meeting. Everything's going to work. And if I do have a problem, you know, we can email somebody, and they're going to have our back. And so that's just one thing, and I know a lot of staff do that as well for other meetings. But thank you, Nicole, for that, and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, Councilmember Stevens. Nicole, I will say that you did everything that I asked much more quickly than I thought you would, and when I was getting out of line, you used a little tone. Excellent. Keep doing that in the rest of your life, and you will be a success. Nicole, would you like to say anything? Are you weeping there?
Just wanted to say I really appreciate my time here. I've learned a lot, and it's been really great to work with everybody at the city, so thank you all for your kind words.
Finally, Mr. Yaden, the city attorney's report.
Thank you, Mayor. There's no report this evening.
All right, so the-
Next item on the agenda, Mayor, you're muted again randomly.
Sorry. The next item on the agenda is, I'm sorry, a special presentation. Mr. Lahanas is going to give us a special presentation on police realignment, a little bit of background. The council asked the city manager to put together his best thinking on this idea of what we need to do to respond to all the issues of today. This is his work right now. We're going to take this in tonight. We're not going to actually vote on anything, obviously. And then in the near future, there's going to be a retreat where the council talks to the public and to each other and to staff, and this will be part of the retreat where we decide where to go forward. So with that preamble, Mr. Lahanas.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, I'm looking forward to presenting to you our vision for the police. We call it "Visiting Police 2020." So let me move this out of the way so I can see. So our plan, obviously, as the mayor said, is to think about how we can envision a police department in the future. We've heard a lot of conversations from council, a lot from the community, and then obviously, the council, as the mayor said, asked me specifically for our vision. So this is my vision for a police department. I didn't do anything alone, obviously. I was assisted by Deputy Chief or interim Chief Gonzalez, Captain Chad Connolly, assisted also by our H R Director Shelley Newman, our D E I Administrator Elaine Hardy, and finally, our Finance Director Jill Falpas. So lots of people assisted with it, and I greatly appreciate their work. So if we switch to the next slide, we can see, obviously, about a month ago, we put out a strong statement. We said we categorically and unequivocally denounce racism, injustice, and discrimination in all forms. And we set out a number of action steps. One of the couple of prominent ones we've already acted upon is appointing a D E I administrator. So Elaine Hardy's in that position. She's already been into the position and working within the city to help, including in helping on this project, as I mentioned. And we're actually, I found out, we're one of the first communities in the region to have someone in that position. Also, on the prior slide, we have the lead of full organizational cultural realignment. Obviously, the council talked a couple of weeks ago and has set out a training plan that I think is very aggressive, and it's appropriate to lead in the cultural change for leadership. We have that at the point where it's going to be going to a Request for Proposals shortly, and hopefully in August, we will have something for council to approve so we can begin that training early fall, September, or as soon as possible. Next slide, please. We also talked about for all employees, not just the leadership, in order to show a commitment, having all of our employees go through an anti-bias and diversity training. So that's something that we're going to push to all corners of the organization. Everyone at every level is going to have the benefit of that training, and that's going to be in-person training. It's going to be intensive, and I think that that's going to show that the organizational commitment for all of our employees is, you know, not just for leadership, but in every part of the department, every part of the city. We also, obviously, will work now with the Police Independent Oversight Review Commission, the commission that is setting up the Police Oversight Commission. And then in the future, with the Police Commission, when it's set up, it will be assisted by the City Manager's Office, Police Department, H R, and Diversity Equity Inclusion as needed. So we will provide the assistance they need so that they can be successful in their roles. Next slide, please. So when we look at, obviously, the national and local conversations on policing, you know, obviously, May 24th, the date we'll remember was the murder of George Floyd, and that really has elevated the conversation on race in a way that I think hasn't happened since the 1960s, just before I was born. So it's been, this is quite a watershed moment for us in this country. And it's elevated the conversation on bias in policing, and we've obviously heard a lot about that conversation over the past months. So it's led communities to reevaluate policing standards, policies, and methods, and obviously, that's taking place here. And certainly led for us to engage with our community members, and we're in the process of doing that, about how we are policed and how we want our police to, what role we want our police to play in the community. And there's also certainly been a discussion about funding the police, and there's been some discussion about that tonight, on are there other ways that we should be spending dollars instead of on strictly enforcement to better meet the needs of our community. Next slide, please. So as we look to the rationale for realigning the law enforcement, we have a couple of sort of rationales for that. A belief that all persons have a right to feel protected by those who are sworn to serve and protect. So obviously, we want people of every race and ethnicity to feel welcome, to feel that the police are working on their behalf, and to have confidence in that. We want, as city leadership, we want people to have, in all aspects of our community, have the confidence that we are here to help build trust with them so that they know that this organization is working on their behalf. Another thing that's important is that belief of public safety is a partnership. So public safety as citizens, it's not something we give to the police and say, "At this point, you must make us safe." It's a partnership, and that means the role of council, the role of this Police Review Commission, the role of the Human Relations Commission, the role of neighborhood associations in partnering with police officers, Neighborhood Watch, all of those areas. Are we taking responsibility for partnering with police to make sure the community is safe? And it even gets to the issue of, are we calling the police at the right time? And that's something council has been discussing with making certain that people are calling the police when needed, but not calling the police when they are not needed or when it's not appropriate. And that's something we should all take responsibility for. Belief that the entire city culture must be anti-racist, inclusive, diverse, and welcoming. And again, this is not just about police, though police is the focus of this conversation. We want this anti-bias training and cultural shift across all departments. And then the belief that funding can be realigned to serve the community in other meaningful ways without compromising public safety. So again, getting to this issue of trying to put resources to lessen the need for enforcement and provide other services in lieu of enforcement. Next slide. So there's a couple of areas we're going to hit upon in general, culture, staffing, and budget. And we'll go through each one. Next slide. So as we start this training initiative, we're going to lead off with a cultural climate assessment. So part of it's going to be basically a pre-testing so we can see where we are as an organization in all of our departments. And then once we have this intensive training, we'll be able to do testing after that to see what progress we've made. Because obviously, we want to try to use data. We're not just training to sit in trainings. We're training to be able to make that cultural shift. So that's a part of it, is using data to see what impact we're having. Also, there's a number of things we're going to continue on, obviously, fair and impartial policing, de-escalation training. You know, we want our officers continually to use those tools to be able to get to the least level of intervention that is possible, and de-escalation, trying to get situations down where ideally is never the call to use force, if possible. Anti-racist and anti-bias training, again, for all departments, including Police Department. Coordinating with our D E I Administrator, this is something that we've already started, and it's been, I think it's been extremely beneficial already, having Elaine Hardy be a part of conversations like the creation of this document and in sort of policy discussions with the Police Department. And I think that that's something that has been a value-added for us. Reassessment of committed time to allow for increased frequency of training. So training more frequently throughout the year, and that's the premise here, is to better reinforce these principles so that we're not bunching up training at one week per year. We're training perhaps quarterly or more frequently so that that's reinforcing these principles on a regular basis, the principles of anti-bias, the principles of de-escalation. And then, of course, an emphasis on positive interactions between police and the community. And this is really important because we already do a lot of outreach, but there has been some areas where I think we can formalize that outreach. If you look at, for instance, our PAL, Police Athletic League, it's a great opportunity for our police officers to engage with youth in a positive way, playing basketball and all the sports they do, other things like that, police explorers. But we've had that where it's been shop with the cops, another example, where the officers have to volunteer their time, and many officers have volunteered many hours over their careers. I think that's something that should become a formal part of their job, and that should be something that we're doing as a part of our operation. And it's even especially important now as we look to have other employees taking up portions of our policing activities that our officers will be available to handle more serious crimes, more serious interactions. We don't want to have all of the interactions with officers be on a more serious basis. So what we want to do is make sure we're creating those positive opportunities for our officers to engage in basketball games with youth, to engage in, if it's summer camp activities, any of those sorts of activities that create positive interactions and formalizing that. So that's something I think is important. Next slide, please.
Hang on a second. Councilmember Stevens.
Hey, George, I don't mean to derail you. Would you mind just touching on a little bit like that culture, climate assessment? Would that be done by an outside firm? Like, what's the, I've just never-
Yes, so that would be, that would essentially be like a pre-test from the organization or the firm that we approve a contract with to take us through this cultural change and transition. So just like council and the leadership are going through this cultural training where we'll be doing a half-day per month or whatever it is we agreed to, that organization will be doing a cultural climate assessment sort of as the start of it, again, kind of a pre-test to see where we are as an organization. And then we'll be going and doing tests later on in the process so we can, you know, verifiably determine the impact of the cultural change. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Great. And I can't see anybody except for the slide, so if you have questions, if council wants to stop, and of course, there's time at the end, but if council wants to ask questions-
I'll interrupt. I'll interrupt you if I need to.
Great. So part of our visioning strategy, a policing model shift. Council has already been talking about ordinance reform, and we've talked about the need to have fewer interactions where there are low-level interactions where perhaps they don't even need to be violations. And that's like the disorderly conduct example. That'll be coming back to council. So reduction of order-style policing. This is the notion that if you do lots of enforcement for lower-level things, the community is safer. I think we've seen from studies that that does not necessarily in any way reduce more serious crimes. So we have to ask ourselves, is it really beneficial for us to switch away from order-style policing and instead focusing on community partnerships and collaboration and this sort of alternative to enforcement to be able to make the community safer? And then finally, prioritizing diversity equity inclusion training. Next slide, please. Again, we're going to want to use data to help drive our decisions and drive our progress here. So we're going to use data to track and measure our successes and, of course, to hold ourselves accountable. Data in lots of different areas. We're going to be using data to look at the types of calls and how successful we are diverting those calls to alternative staff people, the data used to look at the interactions with people to make sure that we're not overpolicing a particularly minority group, if that's an issue that we have to track. You know, for instance, I think that we've looked at that data, as the caller mentioned, based on census data. And I actually think that the City of Lansing has a good model here where they use an independent academic researcher from, I think it's Michigan State University, that every two years does a full comprehensive study for them and really gives them a perspective of whether they believe that there is an equity problem in terms of their overall police contacts. So I think that that's something that we would be recommending to council, to commission at some point, and then have a relationship where we're looking at that data on a regular basis, but it's an outside expert that is doing that study for us. And then I think that has a high degree of independence in terms of how that's done. So that's something we'd like to talk about as well. Next slide, please. So in terms of current staffing, the City of East Lansing has 54 sworn officers. Currently, we have 52. So in 2019, calls for service have been about 18,000 calls for service. We average about 50 per day. And of course, being university community, sometimes there are much fewer calls, for instance, in the middle of the summer, and then perhaps in the fall, the calls for service go up quite a bit. Those calls could be anything from a couple of minutes to a couple of hours to resolve, depending on the seriousness of it. So I mentioned 52 sworn employees. That's a reduction of two currently from our budget. Those two vacancies will be held, and those positions will be eliminated. At this point, further reductions would be through attrition, and I'll talk about that. And that would provide us, the 52 going down to further reduction would still provide us an opportunity to have one supervisor between four and five officers on the road on a regular basis. Next slide, please. So this really gets to the heart of our realignment, and this gets to the issue of focusing more money on problem, and more resources on problem solving and less resources on enforcement. And the advantage here is obviously to solve the problems that we're having, whether it's a call for service, an emergency, with the least intensive resources possible and therefore making everybody more comfortable with that interaction. If you can solve a problem by having a staff person that's not an officer, you know, collaboratively resolve a problem, then that's a success for us. So we're talking about creation of a CAPS division. CAPS is Community Assistance and Proactive Services, and I really think that name encompasses what we're looking for here. It's focused on the community, providing assistance proactively, and we're focusing on services. So we're offering services to help people. Civilian personnel responding and providing alternate service to community, again, away from the focus on enforcement. They would be embedded with E L P D, which is a very significant thing. We had a lot of discussion on this point, but that's our recommendation because we want this to be a part of the emergency processes of the city. So therefore, 911 would be dispatching these people potentially, just like they dispatch police officers or firefighter paramedics. They could dispatch people from CAPS as well. And I think that's important because we don't want to have a division that sits alone from the department where we're doing follow-up the next day. That's not the point of this. The point is to get the right resource at the right time to the right place. And if that's an emergency call, that's when we need it. We also want to have somebody who has the connections of the Police Department so that if they're working hand in hand, that they're both responsible for the success, sort of a team approach. We want to provide proactive, appropriate resources based on need and provide expertise in facilitating conflict resolution. Again, having people with different problem-solving skills and different problem-solving focus. Next slide. So here we have CAPS, and we have the two positions that we're going to be starting off with. And these are both different levels of positions. Social worker, full-time- Social worker, full-time. We would recommend at this point hiring two full-time social workers. These would be M S W or Masters of Social Work level people who have extensive experience in in case management and working with people, um, you know, um, providing services to people in a mental health setting. So they would be here to address mental health, long-term resolutions to problems, including homelessness, substance abuse. They could be there to assist at people in times of crisis. A lot of times when someone is in crisis, uh, nine-one-one may get a call on that, and an officer could be dispatched. You could see a situation where the the CAPS social worker would go along with the officer and be able to provide, I think, um fairly stated, much better assistance at that point. So the officer could be there to provide for safety, but the CAPS social worker is there to provide for linkages to services and an assessment to see what steps are next. You know, my prior career was in public mental health, so I've seen this at work. Um, I've gone on crisis intervention calls with social workers um various times of the night, and I can tell you that what what social workers can do in terms of an assessment is amazing. They've got a lot of skill in this area, and being able to have um people with that skill level uh partnering with our police officers, I think, really makes a powerful combination. Also, the neighborhood resource officers are next position. We got to think of this as somewhere between a pace officer and a police officer. So pace officers write tickets in violations against property, against cars, against high grass, and they don't do enforcement with or do any um interaction with people, per se. But the uh neighborhood resource specialist would do interaction with people. Part of their um part of their goal is going to be to um respond to calls, to take um sort of an educating and a um a uh collaborative approach, so non-enforcement, but but community-focused. So if there are quality of life issues, if there's a civil dispute, those types of situations where we could send a neighborhood resource specialist. You could think of a situation where on a Sunday afternoon, there's some young people potentially on a porch with stereo speakers facing out and blasting music, and you get a complaint. Is that a situation that would require an armed officer? Or is that a situation where a neighborhood resource specialist could approach and advise, educate people about the ordinance, educate people about the fact that they received a complaint, and then ask for compliance and ask them to turn it down? And if that could work, then that was a really successful interaction because you sent a lower level of of um a lower intensity of service, right? And that solved the problem more collaboratively. And of course, if that doesn't work, then you'd have to go to the more intensive levels where an officer may have to be called or something like that. You could also see a situation in this group, and I think that that's one of the reasons we want this to be a division of people working together, where these neighborhood resource officers could come from different backgrounds. You could have someone who wants to be a police officer. You could have someone who wants to be a social worker. You could have somebody who um is in other human service areas, who was a, you know, um, community-building person who wants to do that type of dispute resolution and community services, someone who wants to work in healthcare. So there could be lots of different people that come to this neighborhood resource specialist position because their job is really community-based problem-solving and resolving um disagreements without the need for enforcement. You could also see an opportunity where people from those backgrounds, in partnership with the social workers, makes a real powerful combination. If a social worker wanted to approach someone who's experiencing homelessness, they could take a neighborhood resource specialist with them, and that partnership, they could go and approach someone and talk to someone and see if they needed any linkages to services. But at that point, you don't have to have an armed officer potentially, which could cause a much different feeling interaction than having two people, a neighborhood resource specialist and a social worker approaching somebody. Um, so you could see the people from that different backgrounds really could create a great synergy. And I also think there's a a great opportunity for synergy between the officers and the CAPS employees because now you're talking about people from different backgrounds solving problems in different ways. And I think that there's a great opportunity for cross-pollination and learning on both sides. So I think that's really exciting. I did, I don't know if I got to mention, I had a good conversation with a Lansing social worker. They have one social worker in their Police Department full-time and had a pretty extensive discussion with her about her job there. And um it really is a uh a a matched with a police officer. She stressed that a lot of times if someone is in crisis, that she goes on a call with officers, and the officers are there to secure the scene and make sure everything is safe so that she can have a more meaningful interaction with people. Um, but that's, you know, but that's a an effective way that they're doing it there. And she said it's been very beneficial. So um we'll be using her as a resource as we move forward with this. So this really is a um a, I think, a very innovative approach. I was um in a conversation with a Big Ten city managers last week, and we were talking about law enforcement, and this is what I raised and sort of in our idea here for this department or this division. And I got a lot of people excited in terms of a different model for thinking about problem-solving. And I think also, this is enough of a of an investment in resources that we have enough coverage, that we can really prove that the concept works by having enough people. Putting one social worker in, I don't think necessarily is going to be enough to tell us if there's if this alternatives are going to work on a regular basis, but I think this certainly will. And then, over time, what we're going to be able to do is say, where do we need more resources? Do we need more social worker time? Do we need more neighborhood resource specialist time? And then we can certainly adjust it as we move along, as we see the call basis going on. Um, so with that, uh, next slide, please. So budget. You know, I think that um over time, I say over time, it's a little bit of wiggle room. Uh, this is cost neutral. Um, positions, um, you know, transitioning from police officer to CAPS positions through attrition. I already mentioned, we have two positions of police officer that are vacant. Those could be transitioned directly into social work positions, which would be pretty comparable in terms of pay and overall compensation. And then the CAPS positions we mentioned, I mean, the uh net, the neighborhood resource specialists are part-time, so that would be a a a reasonably modest investment upfront. And then we would look to, over time, reduce police officers through attrition, get into a reduction of ten percent of our sworn strengths, and then being able to assess at that point if we have the mix right in terms of officer count, in terms of um CAPS employees, and the mix of social workers versus neighborhood resource specialists. So I think that that is something that we would assess over time. And with that, uh, next slide. So next is council's opportunity to ask questions or make any comments for us.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, any questions or comments for George? All right. The next item on the agenda, I'm sorry, I need to pull up, sorry, Councilmember Greg.
I I just wanted to, I've talked to George about um the realignment a little bit over the last couple of weeks, and he kind of kept me up to date on the way things are going. Um, I think as a as a first step out the door, I think this is a really positive direction, and I'm excited to see um the change that it makes um in our community. I've been, I'm talking as if this has already been adopted, which obviously it has not, but you know, um, uh, I just wanted to, um, it came up on one of your slides, but I just want to reemphasize my personal feeling that tracking our officers' committed time is going to be a really important part of this. Um, I think it was actually in your addenda item report, there was a um, hang on a second, there was a kind of a weird category of miscellaneous service calls that I just, you know, so there's crimes against property, blah, 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 and then there's one called miscellaneous service calls that's got like, you know, more than everything else combined at nine thousand seven hundred and forty-nine calls. So that's just like a very large percentage of our calls to be slushed into a category called miscellaneous, you know? So I think um kind of just paying attention to to what types of calls are coming in and who's responding to them. I think that's all built into the plan that you just presented. I just wanted to kind of reemphasize that I think that that is going to be a very important part of this, so.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Stevens.
Thank you. Um, I want to thank the city manager for for going through this um, and I, as well as the deputy chief um for working with him on this. So um, no, I I agree with Councilmember Greg. I think this is a a good step in the right direction. I think that, you know, working towards um what the initial goals are and then reevaluating at that point to see if, you know, we need a more focus on on different areas and to see and reevaluate whether whether certain things are working is important. Um, the only things that I'd highlight um that are that are important to me is just organizationally, um, you know, if we're if we're looking at having kind of another structure within the Police Department, um, making sure that that, you know, silo is definitely connected to the Police Department and feels like they are, they are, you know, part of the public safety team, but also feels like, you know, they have the ability to to talk about procedure, to talk about policy that we have right now that that might need to be adjusted just based on, you know, their own experiences within the community. Because I think that, you know, having um folks um, you know, kind of have that ability, and this this goes for the Police Department overall. Um, you know, if there are policies and procedures that like us on council don't know about or things that we think should be edited, you know, or um, you know, folks that come into the department and say, you know, this should be um a little bit different, then, you know, I want to make sure that those voices are being heard. So um, and the, you know, the next, the next question I just have is, you know, how is um, how is our new uh D E I administrator going to be kind of in the mix of this um this uh plan proposal?
So Mr. Lohanas?
Yeah, so she was a part of the creation of this plan, the presentation of the plan. And, you know, obviously, she, I mentioned, she's already been incorporated into discussions about with the Police Department when I'm meeting with the Police Department. So I think there's lots of um points where she will be used as a resource internally with the Police Department, so I think in this area as well. I'm actually looking for, I I would not mind getting direction from council soon after this meeting to actually start implementing this because I I don't think that this is such a cataclysmic change that we would want to wait, you know, because this is going to take time to implement. So I do think that um this is something that is attainable for us. I know there are many different things you want to work on, but if council wants us at some point to give the go-ahead to this, um, I would like to work with the Police Department. I think they're eager to get going on it. So um, just something for you to consider.
Okay, so Mr. Lohanas, at this point, and for all points, uh, you are the administrator in charge of the Police Department. So what you think is important to implement, if we don't have a time to meet, I mean, these are all, these are all steps forward. Whether they're enough or not, we will decide at our at our retreat. So if these are things that you, as the administrator of the city, think are important to do, then by all means, Mr. Stevens.
Um, yeah, I I would agree with that, and and I'm I'm in support of moving forward with this. Um, the next thing was just uh Councilmember Greg, and I think a couple of members of the public throughout the past few meetings have talked about a sobriety center. Um, I just want to have that in the mix um when we're exploring these. I know that that would have to be a regional effort. I know that that takes a lot of different people coming together to probably put some funds together to do something for it, but um I do think that that should be a priority in the coming future just because it's it's proven to work in other areas and.
I agree with that, and I think Councilmember Greg put her thumb up, and I think Councilmember Babcock has already talked about that, uh, Mr. Meadows as well. So, Mr. Lohanas, will you put that on your list of things?
Yeah, and we've had a regional conversation. Yep.
So my comment on this, Mr. Lohanas, is clearly you are taking everything uh from Black Lives Matter very seriously and trying to improve uh policing in East Lansing so that people of color feel safe in East Lansing and driving through East Lansing, and I think this is a great, great first step. So thank you very much. Any other comments? Uh, Mr. Meadows.
Thank you. I wanted to say ditto. Um, and I might add that I want to give kudos to George uh in putting together this plan, and um I think that uh this is a great first step for us, and it may be, as it turns out, this reorganization uh is the type of thing that um will get us down the road, and and maybe we don't have to make a lot of changes to this as we go forward. It'll be great to see in a year or two how this is actually functioning uh within our community and whether it makes a difference, not only for citizens, but for people who come into the community to feel more comfortable uh with regard to um our policing and our approach to public safety. So that's my comment.
Thank you very much. All right. The next item on the agenda uh is our only public hearing for the night, five-point-one consideration of ordinance.
Consent agenda as well. Mayor Byer. Mr. Lohanas, would you mind reading that consent agenda?
Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So we have the following items on the consent agenda. For council consideration, item four-point-one, approve the following appointments or reappointments to boards and commissions. A, Crystal Davis to the Human Relations Commission for a partial term ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. B, Caitlin Bolton to the University Student Commission for a term, for a full term ending September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. C, Chuck Grigsby to this, to the Study Committee on an Independent Police Oversight Commission. D, Eric Williams to the Study Committee on an Independent Police Oversight Commission. E, Cedric Harrow to the Study Committee on an Independent Police Oversight Commission. F, Sharon Reed Davis to the Study Committee on an Independent Police Oversight Commission. Chris Root to the Study Committee on an Independent Police Oversight Commission. H, Ron Bacon to the Study Committee on an Independent Police Oversight Commission. I, Tonya Williams to the Study Committee on an Independent Police Oversight Commission. J, uh, Sadie Callwood to the Study Committee on an Independent Police Oversight Commission. K, Quentin Tyler to the Study Committee on an Independent Police Oversight Commission. Uh, Helen I, Helen Thompson to the Study Committee on an Independent Police Oversight Commission. And M, Noel Garcia Junior to the Study Committee on an Independent Police Oversight Commission. Uh, letter N, Tom Farrenbach to the Local Development Finance Authority. Item four-point-two, approve resolution recognizing the Stonewall uprising. Item four-point-three, approve an allocation of fourteen thousand dollars for project contingency on the Bailey Park Improvements Construction Contract with E T McKenzie Company. Funds are currently available in the Bailey Park Improvement Projects Budget for Project for this budget allocation. Four-point-four, approve a resolution endorsing an application under the Michigan Recreation Passport Program, which authorized the city manager to sign and submit an application requesting one hundred and twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars to reconstruct the basketball court at Patriarch Park. Item four-point-five, approve resolution endorsing an application under the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund Program, requesting three hundred thousand dollars to reconstruct the tennis and pickle courts at Patriarch Park and authorize the city manager to sign. Item four-point-six, approve a five-year contract with Cummins Sales and Service to perform inspections and maintenance for the generators located at city facilities. Item four-point-seven, approve an extension of thirty-minute grace period to August fifteen, two thousand twenty, for public parking customers in gated lots and structures downtown and directing staff to implement a fifteen-minute grace period beginning August sixteen, two thousand twenty, in all gated lots and structures. Item four-point-eight, approve a resolution adopting a final project plan for collection system and water resource recovery facility improvements and designating an authorized project representative. Item four-point-nine, approve two resolutions authorizing the following employees to purchase service credit for municipal employees retirement system, MERS. Adam Park, police sergeant, two years of service credit. James Didion, police officer, two years of service credit. Item four-point-ten, approve the support of an amicus brief in the case of Fulton v. City of Philadelphia. Item four-point-eleven, approve a resolution recognizing and celebrating the thirtieth anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, A D A. Item four-point-twelve, introduce and set for August eleventh, two thousand twenty business agenda, ordinance fourteen eighty-nine, an ordinance to change the name of the Human Relations Commission to the Human Rights Commission. Item four-thirteen, introduce and set for August eleventh, two thousand twenty business agenda, ordinance fourteen ninety, an ordinance to prohibit biased crime reporting. Item four-point-fourteen, introduce and set for the August eleventh, two thousand twenty business agenda, ordinance fourteen ninety-one, an ordinance to amend or delete various provisions of the Disorderly Conduct Code. Item four-point-fifteen, set up a public hearing for August eleventh, two thousand twenty, to consider an application for a special use permit from Grand, from Gateway of East Lansing LLC for the property at three hundred West Grand River Avenue to convert the first-floor retail space to a fitness center for residents and non-residents of three hundred West Grand River Avenue. Four-point-sixteen, set up a public hearing for August eleventh, two thousand twenty, to consider a site plan and special use permit application from C A East Lansing Incorporated for the property at one-two-three-four East Grand River Avenue to create a recreational marijuana retail establishment. Four-point-seventeen, set up a public hearing for August eleventh, two thousand twenty to consider a site plan and special use permit application from Green Peak Industries LLC, D B A Green Peak Innovations, for the property at uh three-three-one-five Coolidge Road to create a recreational marijuana retail establishment. Four-point-eighteen, set up a public hearing for August eleventh, two thousand twenty, to consider a site plan and special use permit application from R J B Enterprises LLC for the property at nineteen fifty Merritt Road to create a recreational marijuana retail establishment. Those are all the items on the consent agenda for council's consideration.
Thank you. Would anybody like anything removed from the account, uh, sorry, consent agenda, Mr. Stevens, and then Councilmember Greg?
Um, I would like to have a little bit more discussion on um four-point-one, which includes the um appointees to the Study Committee. Um, just to, I kind of wanted to explain to the public what the um, what the process was like to select those um individuals. And then I also wanted to talk about four-point-seven, the parking um grace period extension.
So are these just discussions, or would you like them removed from the agenda?
Um, four-point-seven, I would like, I'd like move to the business agenda.
Okay, so four-point-seven is going to be removed from the consent agenda and placed as second on the business agenda. Uh, Mr., and a- also, you wanted more discussion about how they were selected. So, Mr. Lohanas, could you, or did you want to do that yourself, Ms. Greg?
Well, I kind of wanted, you made the final decisions. We had uh an email.
Okay, I will do it. I'd be happy, I'd be happy to do it. Okay, so to respond to Councilmember Greg's question, uh, we we passed a resolution to create this Study Committee to to tell the council how best to create a Police Oversight Commission, and this the council how best to create a police oversight commission. And this was obviously in response to, um, all the issues that East Lansing is having and that the country is, is experiencing in terms of policing and people's, people of color. So what we did is we, uh, passed a resolution that had categories and how many people in each category we wanted. So for example, we wanted one person from, or two people from Michigan State University, and one of them had to be part of the, uh, University Student Commission. We wanted somebody from ACLU, and then we wanted, I think, two more people from agencies like Black Lives Matter or a similar agency. And then there were other categories. Um, residents and some non-residents sent their applications in, and I asked Emily to organize them by those categories to make sure we had people in each group. Then I sent the resumes and that list to each councilperson and asked them to send me their list of people in order that they would want to be in, on the Study Committee. So in, in eight of the 11 cases, every, it was clear who was going to be on the Study Committee because those people got the most votes, actually in nine of the 11 cases, those people got the most votes from every councilperson. So I just put them on. Um, in the University Student Commission, there was only one person who applied, so that person was put on. Then for the last person, there were, um, five applicants who had the same number of votes. So I sent those five people back to, uh, all councilpeople, and I asked them to rank both those five to come up with the one person that was put on, and that's how the fif, the 11th person was picked. And so that's, that was the procedure. Ms. Greg, did that answer your question?
Yeah, I just wanted, as there's been so much interest in this, and it's.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
How those people were chosen. Thank you.
Councilmember Stevens, did you have something as well, or is it 4.7?
Um, you know, it, it was discussion, so I'll wait for a motion.
Okay, anything else? So 4.7 has been removed and will be item two on the business agenda. Um, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda as?
There needs to be a motion here.
Oh, I thought you just moved.
I said I'd wait for a motion, so I, I will move approval of the consent agenda as listed without item 4.7.
All right, thank you. And I will second that motion. All, all in favor, say aye.
I have discussion on.
Is there any more discussion on this?
Thank you, sorry. Um, so I have, I have a couple of, uh, things that I wanted to discuss. So one is the ADA resolution that is on the consent agenda today. Um, I'd just like to give a public thank you to Pat Cannon. He's a member of our now hopefully going to be Human Rights Commission, not Human Relations Commission. Um, he brings this up every year, um, and I, I think it should be a regular standing resolution that we pass. Um, we are lucky enough to have him on the commission. Um, he was actually there when this, when this bill was signed, um, and, uh, continues to bring a really great perspective to the, uh, Human Rights Commission. So I wanted to thank him for bringing that up. Um, the next thing that I wanted to address was, um, some of the funds, uh, that are going to be used for parking and income tax. I just wanted to ask the city manager, um, have, have we gotten to a point where we can have a detailed explanation of where income tax funds are going on the website? I know that was something that was going to be worked on.
Yeah, I think that's already, um, been prepared. I'll check to see if we're ready for that, if that's already up or not. I'll let you know directly.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just think that's important when income tax funds are being used. Um, and my last thing is that we've got several, um, items that are being set for a public hearing, um, for marijuana establishments. I had a really good conversation with a member of the Planning Commission, Dana Watson, on restorative justice on this. We had a very brief conversation when these, when our original ordinance on marijuana was passed. Um, but it was, I think, clouded by other issues that were more related to zoning and use. Um, so I just want to put a bug in everybody's ear that, um, I will be bringing probably some issues up when we have that August 11th meeting. Um, I do think that there are possibly more things that we can do to assure that, you know, when we're allowing, um, marijuana in, in the city of East Lansing, that we're, that we're also helping those populations that were badly affected by the war on drugs. So, um, I do want to just put that bug in everybody's ear because I think it's an important conversation that we need to have.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Meadows?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just on that point, I'll just note that I think last, no, last January, I asked Mr. Yaden to, to begin to take a look at the social justice aspect of marijuana. We have had a number of exchanges, and I think it's been delayed a lot because COVID has sort of disrupted everything that we were trying to do. Uh, but I, I would expect that, yeah, I think only Kalamazoo had a, uh, appreciable ordinance that we could take a look at. We do have a copy of that, and I've asked Mr. Yaden to, to prepare an ordinance that's along those lines. Hopefully, that's going to be available by our next, um, discussion only meeting, which probably, probably is September, actually. But I, I think in terms of this, that we need to move on that. That is an important aspect of, uh, making the marijuana industry a lot more, uh, viable for small users and not to have it captured by, uh, giant corporations. And, and that's all we're going to end up seeing, uh, you know, throughout the country. So, um, I think that's coming at some point, and it should be relatively soon. I just wanted people to know that.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Greg?
Um, I wanted to, uh, add my voice to that of support for some sort of, um, social equity licensing in marijuana. I also wanted to, um, just point people towards the, um, the Stonewall Riot Resolution that was on the consent agenda. If you have a chance to read that, I think it's beautifully written. That was, um, thanks to our new diversity and equity inclusion director, Elaine Hardish. She put a lot of work into it, and I found it to be, um, very complete and moving more than I ever imagined when I brought it up. So thank you very much for bringing that to reality for me, Elaine.
Thank you. Um, I didn't mean to cut everybody off. I thought that all, that we would have discussed this during the discussion part of this. I didn't realize that you wanted to do it after the mo, after the motion and the second. So, Mr. Stevens, did you have an additional item?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that. And I, I didn't think that you were trying to cut people off, but I appreciate the sentiment anyway. Um, so, um, to Councilmember Meadows' point, um, if our next discuss, you know, we, we do have a month in between, you know, or almost a month in between this meeting and our next city council meeting. Um, you know, I, I talked to the city manager about it, um, just kind of gauging his opinion. And we do have a lot of things that are on our agenda, a lot of things that are, that are fairly pressing. So if we did want to have another conversation, um, maybe even schedule a discussion only meeting in the time between this meeting and the next one, um, even if it's just to talk about that kind of social equity lens on marijuana, I'd be in support of that, just because we do have those public hearings on, on August 11th. Um, or if we, you know, want to move up the timetable even to after that, but, but before September.
I am, I am going to interrupt you now. If you want to have a special meeting, um, that's, that's a fine thing to do, but we do have a packed agenda. So, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda as amended, please say aye, aye?
Aye.
All those, all those opposed, same sign. The consent agenda is adopted. The next item on the agenda is the only public hearing, which is 5.1, Consideration of Ordinance 1483, An Application to Rezone the Property at 3400 West Road from CIP Office Industrial Park District to B5 Community Retail Sales Business Districts and Conditional M1 Manufacturing District and 3401 Coolidge Road from CIP Office Industrial Park District to B5 Community Retail Sales Business District. Um, and the staff person on this is?
Mr. Haywood.
Mr. Haywood.
All right, thank you. Good evening. Um, so, um, this proposal comes, um, as part of a larger development proposal. Um, the applicant wants to redevelop the property between, uh, West Road and Coolidge Road by, um, splitting the property into four parcels, rezoning the property, and, um, constructing an office building for the, uh, Michigan Department of Environmental Great Lakes and Energy, also known as Eagle. So, um, the rezoning that they're proposing here, um, is, is to, uh, rezone three of those parcels to B5. That would be the, the furthermost east and west parcels adjacent to West and Coolidge Road and the, the site for Eagle. And then the, uh, site for the 3GT racing, uh, would be.
You do get to see me in my element, though.
Conditional M1. The conditional M1, uh, basically they're offering to reduce the, um, the number of available uses and, that would typically be allowed in M1, um, by reducing or removing marijuana-related uses, coal or building material storage, radio and television towers, kennels, contractor storage yards from the available uses for that district. Um, and then also, um, to impose the, uh, performance standards for the OIP district related to control on noxious emissions, uh, smoke, heat, glare, vibrations, noise, et cetera, and also require that all activities, uh, in that district for that site, future uses would, would be required to be conducted completely within an enclosed facility. So that's kind of the offered trade-off to the M1 district, is to kind of really ratchet down on, on the performance standards there. Um, so the, uh, Planning Commission, uh, met on this on June 10th and voted unanimously in support. Um, one, um, item that I wanted to bring up, I think I already have. So I guess that's a, a, a high-level overview that I would take any questions or comments at this time.
Uh, thank you. I'm sorry if I was speaking over you, Mr. Haywood. I thought that I was muted. Uh, Councilmember Greg?
I think Stevens' hand was up before mine. Not to be, I don't know.
That's okay, go on.
Thank you.
Um, so, I'm sorry, Mr. Haywood, could you, I kind of got lost in the, the jumble of uses there between the two, um, the two different things. Can you, um, can you summarize to me the allowed uses that they would disallow? Am I understanding that correctly? Can you just kind of, I'm sorry, that was murky to me.
Okay, no problem. Um, so the, the industrial district, um, would allow a wide range of, um, uses, right? Anything wholesale, um, to manufacturing, um, automotive repair, um, light fabricating, um, veterinary hospital clinics, those kinds of things, kind of in that line. Um, but the, the applicants proposing to remove, um, the following uses, marijuana-related uses, coal or building material storage yard, radio and television towers, kennels, contractor storage yards. So those would no longer be allowed in that district for that site. So trying to do is whittle down the industrial uses so that things that are obviously going to be kind of out of place are off the table for an option.
And how?
Further, further control the uses that, uh, would, are still on the table, they're saying, apply the performance standards that are applied in the OIP district to this site in the M1 district so that they can't, you know, create noxious emissions, smoke, heat, glare, vibrations, noise, et cetera. Those are, in the OIP district, those are very strict. Um, and even further, everything has to be within a completely enclosed facility. So that really kind of takes it down to, uh, hopefully, uh, a situation that wouldn't have any outward, uh, annoyances.
Noxious annoyances, yes. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Councilmember Stevens?
Thank you. Um, so, Mr. Haywood, um, I'm going to ask you a question that I, I don't know if you have the specific answer to, and that is okay if you do not. Um, I know that, so the, the Pinecrest Neighborhood Association hasn't made, um, I guess, an official statement on, on this item that's on our agenda right now. Um, I spoke to the PNA president earlier today, just to confirm that. But I know that they did send some edits and/or, um, suggested amendments to the Planning Commission that were then voted down. Would you, do you have any of those, or do you recall what some of those amendments were?
I'm sorry that I do not recall that. Um, I, I know we didn't receive anything in writing.
Okay.
They may have spoke at the, at the meeting, but I guess maybe it didn't get picked up and apologize for not having that on the tip of my tongue.
That's okay. Then maybe I, then I maybe I, uh, am privy to a miscommunication.
It might come up, Mr. Stevens, it might come up in the public, uh, comment on this because it is a public meeting. Mr. Meadows?
Yeah, this, this, this project is over on West Road, right? Is that right, David?
Yeah.
Yeah, you may, I think.
Yeah, the rezoning.
Thinking of a different issue here.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
The Sunday hours issue over at the, on the corner there. I think.
I'm sorry, I clicked on the wrong agenda item. That is completely.
Okay, good. All right, any more questions of Mr. Haywood? All right, this is. That was very funny. Uh, this is a public hearing. So again, uh, Ms. Gordon is going to read the last three numbers of everybody who's on the phone. And if you don't want to speak to this item, just say pass. And if you do, you may speak to this item. Ms. Gordon?
All right, caller number 194, you are now permitted to talk.
Pass.
Okay. Um, caller number 534, you are now permitted to talk.
Hi, this is Anne Hill at 685 Lutheo in the Hoffnest community. I'd like to voice my support for the ordinance 1483 to amend the zoning for the four parcels commonly known as 3400 West Road and 3401 Coolidge Road from OIP to B5 with restrictions and the parcel that 3GT is located on to an M1 zone with restrictions. I especially appreciate the developers, Mr. Paul Gentilosi and Mr. John Gentilosi, for offering under Section 50-110 of Division 5, conditional rezoning in the Code of Ordinances of the City of East Lansing to voluntarily offer restrictions upon the future use of parcels that are undergoing rezoning, specifically excluding marijuana operations of the type permitted under a special use permit. As prior-term board members may remember, at the December 5th, 2017, public hearing regarding ordinance 1395 on medical marijuana, petitions with signatures from homeowners of Hoffnest, the Villas of Stratford, and Eagle Eye Communities strongly opposed marijuana grow, processing, transportation, and testing facilities near our communities. And those petitions had been submitted to the city clerk's office. Our communities continue to oppose these types of activities in and around our neighborhoods as well as the city of East Lansing. We do not believe these activities are appropriate and believe that they are detrimental to the, and would serve to harm our quality of life and consequently serve to reduce our property values. Uh, I think that the proposed office building is much more appropriate in that, um, general area over there. I especially appreciate the owner's understanding that while he values the impact of various types of businesses on the community, any subsequent owner may not share his values and may choose to pursue a zoning classification that would allow marijuana growing, processing, and testing. A future owner may seek personal financial gain at the expense of strong community and for, and family values. Therefore, I urge council to approve ordinance 1483 with the specific exclusion for marijuana operations of the type permitted under a special use permit. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Gordon?
All right, uh, the next number is the caller ending in 963. You may now address council.
Pass. Pass, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Gordon.
Okay, the next, um, caller is George Brookover. You may now address council.
Pass, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gordon.
Then we have John Gentilosi. You may now address council.
Uh, thank you. Uh, this is Paul and John Gentilosi, and we, uh, we appreciate, uh, being on the council's agenda tonight. Uh, and we appreciate the other community support. We, just a little bit of background, we've been here 18 years. Uh, when we bought this property, it was about, the building was about half its size. And I know that some of the zoning may look complex to the council members, but we've worked now for almost a year on this project with staff. And the whole site is owned OIP, which is honestly a zoning code, a part of East Lansing zoning code that needs to be amended and adopted to a, a more modern, traditional use. So our site is a quarter of a mile long, and the building, the existing building's in the middle of it. We really want, we're a neighbor here, we're a property owner here. We want to develop the rest of the site with good conscience and be a good part of the community. So that's what our efforts have been. The staff, as I said, is, this was a difficult thing to, to get a hold of, and we, uh, we want to do it right, and we think that's where we are. And both, uh, my, my partner, uh, my son John and I are here to answer any of your questions or concerns.
Thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Gordon?
The next caller is Patrick Levine Rose. You may now address council.
No comment, thank you.
Okay, then we have, uh, Rachel Sweet. You may now. Okay, then we have Rachel Sweet. You may now address counsel.
Miss Sweet, if you're trying to speak, you are muted. If you would like to pass, if you wouldn't mind unmuting and just saying pass. All right, Ms. Gordon, will you go to the next caller and try Ms. Sweet again at the end?
Absolutely. It looks like Rachel Sweet is our last caller for the public comment. I'll try one more time.
Thank you.
Rachel Sweet, would you like to address counsel? Please unmute if so.
Yes. Thank you.
That is it.
All right, great. So, um, Mr. Meadows.
Uh, move approval.
Well, hang on, I need to close the um, public hearing. I like to close the public hearing. Mr. Meadows.
I move approval.
Um, I second. Any discussion? All those in favor of approval, please say aye, aye. All right, all, um, everybody has voted aye. Uh, the item is approved. Sorry, Mr. Heywood.
I I'm sorry, that moved so quickly. I meant to make one more comment. So you had two ordinances in front of you.
Right.
Had the original ordinance that was introduced and then the edits that were um, provided to you by the Planning Commission.
Right.
And and so I'm, I guess I'm assuming that you are passing the one that was suggested by the Planning Commission.
Let's have Mr. Meadows clear that up.
That is absolutely correct.
And that was my second.
All right. Since we all now exactly know what we're voting on.
Yeah, let's go ahead. So moved and seconded um, to approve the edited version of the item under public hearing. Is that good enough, Mr. Yaden? Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye, aye.
Aye, aye.
It is unanimous and the item as amended is approved. Thank you, Mr. Heywood, for keeping us from making an error. All right, the next item, the first item on the business agenda is considering consideration of the city attorney contract. This item was brought to you by Councilmember Babcock, so Councilmember Babcock.
Thank you. Under the contract drafted and and drafted by Mr. Yaden and approved. About a year ago by city council, the city council has. The city council or the city attorney may dissolve that contract with thirty days' notice. For several reasons, some of which have been articulated tonight and other and and on other occasions. I would like to make a motion that we. Conclude that contract effective Oc- October first, and I would like a roll call vote when we get to it. Thank you.
Uh, before we make that motion, could you say again, did you, we use the word conclude, or do you mean like have the contract end in thirty days?
Right, well, terminate the contract effective October first. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I didn't understand what you were saying. Is there a second?
A second.
Second to my Councilmember Greg, is there any discussion?
Um, I I mean, I feel like it it's owed a little bit of discussion. Um.
Let's pick a view.
Um, I know that it's sudden and I, um. I I guess I want to apologize to our city staff for the clunky way that it was introduced. I had a hand in that. Um, I think I'm gonna, you know, claim my relative um, inexperience as a council member and how to address these things. Um. I, I do realize that, um, moving this would be a sudden change. Um, and that it will be disruptive during a time that is already fairly disrupted, but, um. I think it's important, um, to. I think it's important to clarify who our legal leadership will be in the future. Um, especially since we are going into a um, pretty dramatic period of time. Um, so although it was inelegantly done, I think it's not the wrong time to discuss it, so.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Meadows.
Are are we gonna get a statement of reasons why this is being proposed?
Thank you. Uh, you're not gonna get them from me. Councilmember Babcock? You're muted?
Yeah, it takes a second for your mic to catch up, and Lisa, when you start talking, it's about like ten seconds of, or two seconds of dead air. Anyway, just so you know that for the future.
Under the contract, no reasons are necessary. I I think we've had. Many experiences um, on this council that speak to the need for change.
Okay, so I'll jump in there to that ridiculous response. So the basic decency of hiring and firing requires reason. Just because you can fire somebody without cause at will doesn't mean that you should, and no decent human would. So the way this should be done, and the way a grown up council would do it, would be. If you have a problem with the city manager, you have an executive session. That's when you discuss labor issues. You do not do it in public. And clearly you don't want to do it in public. You want to just fire him without any discussion. I don't blame you. You shouldn't be doing it in the public. We should have sat in an executive session, and what we should have said is, Mr. Yaden, we don't like this, this and this. Fix it. Because if you don't, you know we can fire you. That's how anybody. Who was ever hired or fired or worked in an organization or able to sustain anything in life would do this. So what you're doing is not only unfair, it's nearly inhuman, especially. For somebody like me who comes from a labor background. I would not see a manager firing another manager, and I certainly would not see a city council firing somebody without discussion with that person. From my working with Tom, I was loaded by the same person you were loaded by, which would be. In name Alice Drager to get rid of Mr. Yaden. For reasons of her own, which I am certainly not gonna go into. So I got hired seven and a half, I got elected seven and a half years ago. I said, Mr. Yaden, what happened here with this retaining wall? He told me his side of the story. I went to our our, uh. Director of Planning at the si- time, and I said, Tim, what happened with this retaining wall? He told me his side of the story. I talked to the FBI. I said, what happened with this retaining wall? They told me what happened. What happened was the city made a mistake. The city used CDBG funds to build a retaining wall. The city council, the city attorney did not make that mistake. The city made the mistake, and the city was dinged by CDBG for it. So I thought, okay, Alice was wrong about that. Let's go on to the next thing she accused Mr. Yaden of. Everything that she accused of him of, I went to talk to him, and I said, why do you do this? And he explained it to me. So. After about a year and a half, I decided to quit trying to fire Mr. Yaden and use him as an attorney. The way I used him is that I had, there were attorneys on council who did not want Mr. Yaden to interrupt. A council meeting and say, you're doing something illegal. That's probably not wise. You shouldn't act that way. So I went to Mr. Yaden, and I said, Mr. Yaden, I have no idea what I'm doing. If I'm breaking the law, you need to tell me, you need you need to interrupt me and tell me. And he said, okay, I will. And I and I said, if I ever write anything that you think is incorrect or shouldn't be written the way it is, you need to tell me. And he said he will, and he has. That's how you deal with a city manager and is, sorry, I'm foreshadowing. A city attorney who who is not doing what what you want to do. To simply fire him without ever having even spoken to him, Ms. Babcock, Ms. Craig and Mr. Stevens. About this, about anything that you want to change is is not the way decent people act. So, I I'm not quite finished, Councilmember Babcock. I also don't think this is being done legally. So you can certainly fire without cause. What you cannot do is conspire with other council members. Not in a public meeting to fire without cause. And I think by doing that. You are giving Mr. Yaden a way to sue the city for an illegal firing. And if you're happy with that, go right after it. Councilmember Babcock.
Thank you for mentioning the Open Meetings Act. Under the Open Meetings Act, a discussion of personnel issues can be held in executive session. If the individual requests it, not anyone else. So Mr. Yaden, as he knows, could request this discussion be held in executive session, but has chosen not to. I cannot make that request under the Open Meetings Act. At least not legally. Secondly, I have been very careful. To be sure that the Open Meetings Act has been observed. Uh, the rest of your comments, I will respect as your thoughts. Thank you.
Councilmember Stevens.
So, um, I'd just like to address a couple of things. Um, one, uh, I'd like to. Um, if this if this vote is passing, um, I'd just like to thank the city attorney for um, many years of service and. Being extremely responsive to both staff and others, and it shows and. And what staff members have commended you on and and, um. I thank you for that. Um, to Mayor Byers' comment on um, open meetings, I. It was, it was one year ago when the renewal of this contract got passed. Without any discussion at a city council meeting. And at that point, it was fairly obvious that at some point, three members of council had had a discussion beforehand. And because there wasn't discussion, we had RFPs, we had multiple attorneys, and there wasn't a public discussion. On on those attorneys. We had interviews and we didn't have public discussion. There was just a motion and there was a passing. And I and I think that it's disingenuous to, and by the way, I've I've never talked to Councilmember Greg about this proposal. The only person that has asked me something, and I've I've relayed that to you directly, was Councilmember Babcock. And I believe that having one council member ask another what their opinion on something is is completely allowed under OMA. And that's, that's what happened. And so I I just, you know, I think it's disingenuous to to talk about. OMA and decisions being made behind the scenes when, for many of the agenda items for my first two years. I felt as though I didn't know what was going on the agenda and things were passed without discussion. And so I just, you know, I think that that it is a, it is a disingenuous thought, so. Um, again, I I had no intention of of. Of having this discussion behind closed doors. I'm happy to have this discussion here, but um, if somebody asked me my opinion on something directly. I I believe I am allowed to give it to them.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Stevens. To respond, I think you should look up disingenuous. Secondly, um. I think what you're saying is because the Open Meetings Act might have been violated in the past, I can violate it now, which seems sort of ridiculous. And it actually is a violation of the Open Meetings Act for you and Councilmember Babcock to discuss how you're both going to vote on an issue. Just to clear it up for you in the future. And I suggest when you have your new attorney, you have them interrupt you before you say something like that in a public meeting. Um, Mr. Meadows.
Okay, well, let me, let me uh, just speak to that last uh, item. Uh, what we did uh, last year is we brought in the three top. What we felt, uh, as council members were the three top. Um, potential city attorney candidates. Uh, two law firms, three law firms that I think are top notch within the state of Michigan. And those law firms, uh, we interviewed for a period of time, and then we left our special meeting to that. Uh, conducted those interviews, and we came to a regular meeting and had as a uh, agenda item. Consideration of and it a new attorney, uh, that could be appointed at that meeting. It wasn't without discussion. In fact, I just watched that meeting again. And we talked for about an hour about what we should do with regard to this. Councilmember Stevens had an opportunity to speak over and over again, as well as Councilmember Dreheim, who. Was not in support of the motion that was made so that we could conduct a discussion. The motion that was made was to appoint Mr. Yaden and his firm as city attorney at that point in time. Three of us clearly discussed our reasons why we made a decision. In fact, I watched myself go through. Pages of notes from the interview process in order to tell you why I was. I had decided that I wanted to retain and continue to retain Mr. Yaden. So saying that there was no discussion on that is just nonsense. So the other thing I I would like to say is that I agree with uh, the mayor's comment with regard to the process here, and I I talked to. Councilmember Greg about this today. I I do believe there is a process for this, and if the council is unhappy. Uh, with uh, any of either of its two employees, there's a proper way to take care of this. And that is to confront the employee with the unhappiness or the. Specific items that are causing a problem with regard to the relationship between. The city council or city council members and Mr. Yaden. And so to me, that means that, and I've, I have mentioned this in an email to other council members. That uh, we wait till we do our quarterly review of Mr. Yaden. We express our dis- discomfort or. Disagreement with things that have taken place, and we get it corrected. Or if it's not corrected, we take action to terminate the relationship. None of that professional approach to how we deal with our employees is present here. And I might add one, one more thing. The. It is uh, true that an employee, Mr. Yaden, can, um. Can ask for an executive session to discuss something like this. This agenda item doesn't say anything about a personnel action. It says discussion of the the city attorney's contract. So there was never a notification to Mr. Yaden that he was gonna be fired tonight. Or that the potential was going to be here that he could be fired tonight. That is clearly not. Uh, the idea that he can then ask for a uh, executive session instead of having this on the agenda is just not correct. It is not the process that we have followed here. All we have is an agenda item, nonspecific. The explanation of the agenda item just says, Councilmember Babcock. So it it doesn't really tell anybody anything about what's going on here. Obviously, the word has gotten out. Let me talk a little bit about the Open Meetings Act. I I've already indicated in an email to council members that, you know, I I can't say. Whether they all conspired to to talk about this at one time, and I hear uh, Councilmember Stevens saying. I only talked to Councilmember Babcock. I think Councilmember Greg has said something very similar. But when Councilmember Babcock sat down with me last week, she told me there were three votes to terminate Mr. Yaden. That is the violation of the Open Meetings Act. And it took place. So it is something that I think we do need to deal with, and I realized and and. In my conversation with Councilmember Greg this morning, you know, I think there is a a sort of a misunderstanding. Uh, there is clearly a need for us to communicate, which we always did before. Um, and there's been a lack of that because of COVID, because. There was some kind of pledge at the beginning of this council session that, you know, we weren't gonna talk to each other, and we'd only make. Decisions based on conversations at city council meetings. People need to talk to each other. I mean, it's clearly something, what they don't need to do is make decisions. In concert, and it isn't just about computing the votes. It is deliberation towards a result that is a violation of the Open Meetings Act that clearly happened here. So saying that there's no Open Meetings Act violation, and I I will just say, I don't believe that gives Mr. Yaden a. You know, a lawsuit against the city or anything like that, but I think it was. Inappropriate, and had we followed the professional way we should have been operating, that would have never happened. So I'm gonna be voting no on this motion, by the way. So that's.
Thank you.
Point of my conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Meadows. I will also be voting no, and I wanted to jump on with one of the things that you said. Um. When we started this session, we did agree to be very careful about the Open Meetings Act. We also agreed in this fake word, obviously, of transparency. Transparency, I heard Ms. Greg say it at least one hundred times in her campaign. Lisa Babcock says it every time she says a sentence. And Mr. Stevens is gonna have it put on his tombstone when he dies. All three of them. Violated that most basic public trust by working on this together and then putting. And it a, an item on the agenda that didn't describe what it was. That had no attachment, which they all jump up and down about if anybody else does, to fire one of the most important people. On staff after staff member. on staff after staff member after staff member other than Mr. Yaden has come to them and said, what are you even thinking? So take your transparency and put it where it belongs, someplace dark, because that's where that is. There is no transparency among you three. Either that, or you don't know what the word means. So, Ms. Greg.
I think this discussion is the most transparent thing that has happened on city councils since I've been involved with it. I think we have all had discussions with other councilmembers outside of meetings. Rarely do we disclose the content of those discussions at a meeting like this. To your point earlier, Ruth, about discussing how you're going to vote on a topic, your phone call to me was two sentences long and one of those sentences was, I'm voting no. So if that, I think, you know, expecting to, I think, what Lisa and I are guilty of is talking to each other about something that we had, we both had a shared opinion on. The conversation that I had with Aaron Stevens was specifically related to whether or not I was the second person that would put this on the agenda. And if Lisa had garnished an inkling of how Aaron and I intended to vote, then I think that having conversations with other councilmembers about council issues is part of what is allowed under my understanding of the Open Meetings Act. I think being critical of us for not understanding the exact process of how to do this elegantly, which I have already said it was badly done, and I admit that. You know, how are we supposed to glean that, I guess, automatically after six months of council service, three of which were essentially in lockdown? So if we don't do things exactly the way that they are supposed to be represented on the agenda, then you know, apologies to that, but perhaps we could implement some sort of, you know, deeper parliamentary procedure training. But I think one of the fundamental problems that I have had with my term on council is a complete lack of communication. And so if that lack of communication has included not explaining how to put things on the agenda, then like, let's work on that in the future. But sorry, it was badly done in your mind, but I don't consider that it was a violation of the Open Meetings Act as I understand that act to read.
Thank you. I would like to call the question. Can I get a second?
Aaron's got his hand up.
I have called the question. Is there a second?
Second.
I don't know what that means.
It's seconded. It is seconded by Mr. Meadows. Mr. Mills, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Babcock?
Original motion.
Sorry, I can't hear you, Councilmember Babcock. You weren't muted. It's just that it's your first few seconds don't come out.
My original motion, is that correct?
No, 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 I'm sorry. We're voting on whether to call the question, which would cause us to vote on your original motion. Yes. So if you vote yes on this, we go directly to your motion and cut off conversation.
I vote no.
No? Is it no? Okay, Councilmember Babcock votes no.
I am confused. We're voting on Lisa's original motion.
No, I'm sorry. I called the question, which means we have to vote without any discussion. Councilmember Babcock voted no on that.
Voting with discussion.
Yeah, we're voting to cut off discussion. If you say yes, we cut off discussion. If you say no, we continue to discuss. But it's a roll call, so hang on a second. Mr. Mills?
Councilmember Greg?
No.
Councilmember Meadows?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Stevens?
No.
Mayor Byer?
Yes, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you. Yeah, I just, I just wanted to point out, yeah, the only conversation I've had with councilmember Greg was purely because I was not comfortable being the second councilmember as per our resolution to put this on the agenda. And I wanted to relay information to George, saying that there were two councilmembers in support of putting this on the agenda. Ironically, for some of the things that the mayor and councilmember Meadows has pointed out, I wasn't comfortable being the person that put this on the agenda tonight. So I wanted to relay that there were indeed two people that wanted on the agenda because I wanted to make sure that anybody that wanted something on the agenda could do that. So that was the only conversation I had with councilmember Greg on the item.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All right, this has been moved and seconded and Ms. Babcock asked for a roll call vote. Mr. Mills?
Councilmember Babcock?
Councilmember Babcock votes yes.
Councilmember Greg?
Yes.
Councilmember Meadows?
No.
Mayor Protem Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Byer?
No. So the, is it a resolution is approved and Mr. Yaden's contract will be terminated, will be terminated as described in the resolution. I would like to take that point of personal privilege to say that I'm humiliated to be a part of this council. All three of you have commented that you didn't really know how to do this, rather than find out how to do this. You decided to use your power to fire the city attorney. I would also like to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Yaden. Without your help, Mr. Yaden, I would have violated many laws. I would not have been able to do what I have been able to do. And I just apologize for my neophyte foolish colleagues. I'm sure you will be fine. I'm sorry that your business will suffer so much that you're going to have to lose some colleagues and add to the unemployment problem in East Lansing. Another thing that I'm sure my soon to be ex-colleagues haven't thought about. You're a brilliant attorney and you're going to do great. At this point also, I would like to resign. I'm going to leave this circus to the fools that are left. I do not think it's a good omen for East Lansing. Mr. Lahanas, you need to start looking for a job right away. Since I won't be on council when they come for you, I want to say that again, without your help, we would not have an income tax. We would probably have a bankrupt pension system. We would not have a 15%, 18% fund balance going into COVID. We would not have knocked down those buildings and built those new buildings. We would not have restricted TIPS and reasonable things. You are, I mean, I've only worked with on city manager, but everything I ask, you put into words and you send it back to me. And when these councilmembers, I use the word loosely, decide to come after you, when you need a reference, please call me and I will say, yeah, it was an aberration. I do not know what happened in East Lansing. And Mr. Lahanas deserves your consideration as an excellent city manager. So thank you. I am signing off. Don't forget, Mr. Stevens, 6.2 got moved from the consent agenda. It's now the second item on the business agenda. I'm sure that somebody will remind you if you don't get there. It's been great working with two of you. The rest of you, sayonara.
Okay. All right, I will move the next agenda item. Mark, is there?
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I would also like to have a point of personal privilege right now to make a comment.
Absolutely.
And can you still see me and hear me?
Yes.
Okay. This will take a little bit of time. So I want citizens to know that the decision I have made today to resign from city council was not spontaneous and has been contemplated by me for several months. The action that prompted it was, of course, the action terminating the contract of the city attorney. Last week, I met with councilmember Babcock to revise the matters pending in front of the council. Before we began to address those matters, she provided me with the language of a proposed resignation to be signed by Mr. Yaden. I was told at that time that there are three votes to terminate the city attorney contract. At some point this last weekend, Mayor Byer raised the issue of whether this decision, right or wrong, was made in violation of the Open Meetings Act. And we've just had a lengthy conversation with regard to that. I do believe, as I said, that there was an OMA violation. And I think that's something that the remaining council should take a careful look at. I do feel that the decision once transmitted to me was a violation of the OMA. As I hope our citizens know, I love this city. And consider my decision to move here after I became a single parent, one of the two most important and successful decisions that I've ever made. The other being my successful decision to try to talk Pam Meadows into marrying me. I can't imagine a better place to live or better neighbors in the five neighborhoods that we have lived here. A better education for my kids. Or the way this super stressed guy who had just become a single parent was welcomed and helped by everybody he came in contact with. I have been a lot of things here. Soccer coach, softball coach, baseball coach, president of the soccer club, member of the Commission on the Environment, the Planning Commission, the Housing Commission. 12 years on the DDA and the BRA, a councilmember for 16 years, mayor for 12 of those years, and state representative for six years. I've been involved with many civic matters, most notably the East Lansing Kiwanis Club. My wife has often said, can't you learn to say no? I can say that I can't, and maybe this will be my way to start that. But I doubt it because I'm always looking for a new adventure. Today, though, I'm closing this chapter. I probably should have made this speech last fall or at least asked for a recount when I won the seat by a couple of votes. So why now? Simply stated, I find myself less tolerant than I used to be. And I have a harder time turning what I consider to be an abysmally uneducated approach to things into something positive. This process involving Tom was unprofessional, improper, and demeaning, not to Tom, but rather with regard to the council. Tom is an employee. He has a right to be treated with respect and the reasons for terminating the contract with him are without substance. In fact, we have no clue as to what they are because nobody stated them. Any employee has a right to have the employer sit down with them and detail the things they think are wrong and then later evaluate whether conduct has changed. That process is completely absent here. Lisa mentioned to me last week that some people had been asking her why terminating Tom had not been accomplished already. Obviously, it must have been a campaign objective. She's not been here a year. The COVID has effectively prevented much of the face to face interaction that actually lets you get to know someone. Jesse mentioned to me this morning an event that simply was not Tom's fault. But it was something that she had been relying on in making her decision. She also mentioned that she felt the council had ignored for decades the racial tension that we were trying to address now. I'm the only one here who has served on council for decades. I considered how I would function on this council, which to me has no identifiable vision for the city to move forward. And I realized I am seriously out of place here. While I've been on council, we have dealt with many weighty issues and with civil unrest, always with a careful and studied approach. And I don't feel that's happening here. I think these three remaining councilmembers should have others on council who maybe share their viewpoints. And this gives them an opportunity to have that. My objective as mayor was to always get to the unanimous vote. I was usually successful in achieving that. Two members will be appointed. Hopefully, they will result in unanimous votes. I've been lucky enough in the past to work with people who share my view that being able to see the big picture is the important component of public service. I don't see that here. I do wish this council the best and I hope I am wrong about what I think is going to occur. I'm proud that I served with people like Doug Jester, Sam Singh, Ruth Byer, Eric Altman, Vic Loomis, Bev Bate, and others who have put the interests of the community above their own interests. The councils I have served on were able to change the face of East Lansing positively. Most importantly, with greater financial security to deliver the basic city services that our citizens expect. Tonight, as a balance to my disappointment with the action involving the city attorney, we appointed a group of concerned citizens who will create a proposal for greater citizen oversight of public safety activities. We have been discussing this for well over a year. I am glad it is up and operating. And I might add, tonight, we received a special presentation on something that I think is probably long overdue in terms of reorganization. And that's something that is also positive. Last year, I mentioned that I felt the council of the last four years had been the most productive I have ever served on. And I want to give a shout out to Eric Altman, Ruth Byer, Shannon Dreheim, the new mayor, Aaron Stevens, and Susan Woods, who are all part of that council. I meant what I said. The things we accomplished are awesome. Some of those things will come to fruition during the next couple of years, like the MSU FCU building. I'm proud of what we were able to accomplish. And I don't want to sign off without mentioning two others, Ted Staten and George Lahanas. I see them both cut from the same cloth, knowledgeable and dedicated public servants. And let me say thank you to the city staff. For the last 20 plus years, nothing could be a success here without them. So God bless you all. Thank you again for placing your faith in me for such a long time. And that'll be it for me.
Mark? If you're going to stay on for a moment?
I have not.
Okay. This is extremely unexpected. I'll take a point of personal privilege and I I want to truly thank councilmember Meadows and Mayor Byer. I have learned a lot from both of them. I was elected as a very young individual. And I've oftentimes found myself calling members who have been here a little bit longer than me for advice and for for a lot more than that. And so I appreciate their service and it is their decision to make, but I can't help but feel that we lost something in the city tonight and multiple fronts. I will, I'll probably have a further statement about this at our next meeting or sometime tomorrow, but I'll I'll take that then. I will move on to the, I'll move on to the next, yeah, go ahead, Jesse.
I I'm disappointed with the way that that happened. I I fully admit my own culpability in the clunky way that that was introduced. And I do feel, Mr. Yaden, that I owe you an apology in that regard. However, for the last four years, while I, two years technically, while I covered city council, I watched a majority of three railroad to other members of council who rarely had a full voice in the discussion. Up until this meeting, I have felt that this body of five had a fairly balanced discussion going forward with some people agreeing and some people not. And now, when we have come to a moment where three members have a very strong opinion that is in opposition to two, we have seen them fold up their toys and leave, which I think I have been accused of immature behavior and reprehensible actions tonight. And you are I have been accused of immature behavior and reprehensible actions tonight, and you are absolutely allowed to think whatever you think. Of your opinion of how I have had a part in handling this. But I think that the actions of two elected people who have decided to vacate their seats because they didn't get their way. Um, is equally reprehensible. Um, so although I enjoyed serving with both Mark and Ruth in the time that we had together, I am extremely disappointed in their action tonight.
All right, I will, uh, I will move on to item six point two. Um, and I'll probably be taking a point of personal privilege at the end of the meeting. But I want to make sure that staff can see the opportunity to get the items that we need to get done. Item six point two. George, you might be muted.
Thank you, Mayor. So, um, this item, obviously, we're trying to capture what council wanted, leaving the thirty minute grace period until. About August fifteenth, which is the typical time that most of the students are back and the downtown gets busier. So the idea was to then implement this and go back to the fifteen minute, a little bit of fifteen minute grace period. That we had discussed implementing, uh, in the winter. So that's the idea here and await council's direction or questions.
Thank you for that. Um, I'll open it for discussion, but, uh, just really quickly, George, I appreciate that. And, um. I know that Caleb Shallow, uh, Ursaro as well was, was involved in the process and. Probably getting a lot of opinions back from Parking Task Force and others, so I appreciate the work on this. Um, Councilmember Greg.
Um, I just, um. I'm, I'm leery about moving parking again downtown when things are so, uh, bleak down there still. And I do, I do understand that we're hemorrhaging a considerable amount of money every time we leave those gates up or metaphorically up in this case. But I just, I, I don't know, I've got a very heavy heart, um, thinking of moving it back to fifteen. You know, we had two hours and we went to have an hour and hour dialing it back to fifteen, and I, I do understand that that's the way that it has to happen financially. I just. Um, I don't know, it would be nice to give the downtown businesses a little overlap between the students returning. When they might potentially start seeing customers again and other people using downtown because they're just not coming yet.
Did you want to move the date maybe to, a proposal maybe to move it to September first, the date of change, or? Did you want to have a more discussion and leave it and have discussion in August?
Uh, I guess I'd like, I mean, I, the question is, what can we afford, right? But, um. Well, I mean, and then the answer to that is nothing because we have no money. So. Right? So that, um, you know, uh, it's a short discussion, I guess. Um, can we? How financially devastating is it to move it to September fifteenth? Can we, can we have a little bit more information about this? At our August eleventh meeting. Um, with some numbers from Caleb, and I know he's been calculating this and it's always terrible. But could we, could we?
Yes, so we wanted.
Sorry.
So I think, I think what I'm hearing is that. Um, Councilmember Greg's opinion is that she would like to extend it beyond August sixteenth, but that she, I'm assuming you are not against. Um, you are not against moving the, um, item itself as written, which is the thirty minutes until August sixteenth. Is that correct?
Yeah, no, that's fine. We can do that. Um, extend, extend the current to August sixteen. Can we make a note to revisit it?
Yeah. I'll, I'll request from the city manager that we have this item brought back, um, for a discussion on a further extension at our August eleventh meeting. Is that okay with you, George?
Yep.
Okay, um, I will, I will, um, make a motion to approve, um, now, item six point two. Um, do I have a second? Okay, I believe that's a second from Councilmember Babcock. Um, all those in favor signify by, or any discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying hi.
Hi.
Um, all those opposed, same sign. Okay, um, I am going to ask for a ten minute break. Um, at this point during the council meeting, um, the time is nine fifty-five. Um, I will hope for folks back at ten oh five, um, if that is all right with the folks on the call. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Aaron, can you hear me okay?
Yep, still here, thank you.
Good, I just switched over to my mic on my computer.
Okay, I think there's a little bit of feedback, but I think that should be fine. Yeah, I think one minute left.
Then I'm gonna get a glass of water, I'll be back.
Okay. Nicole, could we mute a Councilmember Babcock's mic, if that's possible? Thanks. Or Emily, actually, I don't know who that was, but thank you.
Oh no.
Are we back, no good? Looking for a...
All set.
Not real live.
Nicole?
Yes, we're still live, you can continue.
Thank you very much Nicole, I appreciate that. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is the original item 6.2, the consideration of a lot split from 3400 West Road LLC, and our staff person of contact is David Haywood.
Thank you, so this proposed lot split, of course, is related to the rezoning that we talked about earlier tonight. Basically, the lots mimic the zoning districts that you saw there. This involves 3400 West and 3401 Coolidge, that are currently two lots. One faces west, one faces Coolidge, each of those will be split into two new lots. And this is, of course, is for the development of the Michigan Eagle offices, their district offices, and the creation of two vacant lots for future development. So, otherwise, the proposal is compliant with the city's master plan and the planning commission recommended on June 10, unanimous support. There's one item I do want to bring to your attention, since, so there are two lots that, one is adjacent to West Road, one's adjacent to Coolidge, and there are two interior lots that don't have access on a public street. That's normally a requirement of our zoning code. The land division code does allow for waivers to that requirement. Those are in the authorization for city council to issue those waivers. So if council did find the proposal favorable, they would need to insert into their motion including a waiver to the lot frontage requirement. Without it, we take any questions?
Any questions of Mr. Haywood? Jesse?
Seems pretty straightforward.
Okay. Could you, Mr. Haywood, could you repeat one more time those extra items at the end there? That, sorry, the exceptions that you would have had under the motion?
Oh yeah, so normally lots are required to have frontage on a public street. The land division code of our ordinance does allow council to provide a waiver in the, you know, interest of their proposal. If you find that favorable, you would need to insert in your motion that it includes a waiver for the street frontage requirement.
Okay, I mean, sorry, and I'm looking over the planning commission letter, the planning commission way in on that specific item?
Yes, they did, I don't know that it's captured in the referral letter, but they were comfortable with that.
Okay.
That item, in fact, was discussed at length.
Okay, I'll make the motion for approval with that additional item as mentioned by Mr. Haywood. Do I have a second? I believe that was a second by Councilmember Babcock. Alright, any discussion?
Seems pretty straightforward.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, Lisa, I didn't hear your vote.
Yes, I'm sorry, aye, just multitasking, thank you.
All those opposed, same sign? Alright, thank you very much, and I'll move on to our next item, which I believe is David Haywood again. Is that correct?
Yes, yep, thank you. So this, I, this is the bookend to our Eagle, West Road, Coolidge Road development proposals here. Oh, no, not actually, we have one more site plan after this. So this is the proposal for the Michigan Eagle Division offices at 3401 Coolidge. So this would be one of the interior lots that were, that we just talked about. This is a proposal for a 23,800 square foot office building, one story in height, approximately 24 feet in height. They plan to have 80 employees in the facility during the hours of 8 to 5 p.m. They do plan on having parking onsite that would be shared for overflow parking at 3400 West, which is the 3GT racing facility. So the, the site has a shared driveway that runs through all four parcels, and a variance is required for their driveway along the north property line. The setback requirement for driveways is 10 feet, where a portion of their driveway would be, I believe, at six feet to match the existing driveway at the 3GT racing facility. There are wetlands on the site, the building was designed to minimize the impact, but it still does require a wetland permit. Transportation Commission reviewed this on January 13th and offered support with some minor recommendations for sidewalks, which are already required, required as a site plan approval item. And the planning commission reviewed this on June 10th and provided unanimous support with 19 conditions.
Thank you for that explanation, Mr. Haywood. Are there any questions from other councilmembers? Okay, I will make, sorry, Lisa, do you have something?
No, I was gonna say again, it looks pretty straightforward and I thank you.
Okay, so I will make a motion to approve the application subject to the 19 conditions listed in the planning commission referral letter of June 12, 2020, do I have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Councilmember Greg, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign? Seeing none, the motion passes unanimously, thank you very much. And I believe, as he is not turning his camera off, though we have one more item from Mr. Haywood, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you, so this is the, now, this is the bookend to the development reviews for the subject area. So we talked about the lot split, the rezoning, the site plan for the Eagle offices. Last component here is 3400 West Road, which is the 3GT racing facility. By splitting the property, that, of course, reduces the size, overall size of their site. And to do that, we have to modify their site plan. So this is just simply to reflect the already approved lot split. And without it, we take any questions?
Are there any questions for Mr. Haywood? Alright, seeing none, I will make a motion to approve the application subject to the six, oh, sorry, was that something for Mr. Haywood? Nope, alright, I will make a motion to recommend, or sorry, to approve the application subject to the six conditions listed in the attached referral letter from June 12, 2020, from the planning commission. I'm looking for a second, oh, alright, seconded by Councilmember Babcock. All, any discussion? Alright, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Alright, all those opposed, same sign? Alright, seeing none, the motion passes unanimously. We are now on to agenda item 6.5, which is from Councilmember Babcock, thank you, Mr. Haywood.
And me?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, well, we've discussed this at prior meetings, and this is a plan to create a temporary police oversight commission. We have, just this evening, seated a citizen group that I think is going to do a fantastic job of creating a permanent oversight process, however, to be sure that we have something in use and available before the citizen commission work is ready to go, I have, as you know, created a temporary process. Late this afternoon, we received a letter from our outside employment council, and I believe they recommended some changes to this, because I, like the rest of humanity, was at Meyer at 5 o'clock this afternoon, or 4:15 when this came in. I'll defer to Mr. Lahanas, and we will, we can discuss amendments as necessary. Also, Mr. Stevens, I think you may have had some amendments passed to you from the Human Relations Committee, and we can discuss those.
Sure, so I, I will go to Mr. Lahanas in just a second, but, you know, I think that there were some concerns, and obviously, there's an add-on to the, the agenda item from our, from our labor council. So my thought process is maybe we defer this and can, and confer with the labor council on, on amending this in the, in the right way, what up? And again, you, you can make a motion for anything, but my opinion on this is I want to make sure that we have the, the right language in there to, to protect us. And given the fact that, you know, we got this earlier today by no fault of, of any of staff, just because, you know, I asked for an opinion maybe a little bit late, I would be okay with deferring this. But that's my sense, and Councilmember Babcock, I'm sorry, could you repeat the question that you had for the city manager?
Oh, I was going to ask if, in light of this letter, which I have only had time to give a brief read to, whether he had any amendments. Well, on the one hand, I think this is an urgent issue, I think, given the highly unusual evening we've had and the late letter from the outside labor council, I would agree with you, putting this off until August 11, our next meeting.
Okay, and city manager, did you have any comment?
Do a motion to defer, and we'll have, we'll be able to come up with recommendations from our council. Perhaps they can recommend things along the lines of their letter, so we have time to look at it, incorporate it into the ordinance.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to defer this item until August 11, 2020. Is that enough time, city manager, you think to?
I believe so.
Okay, and I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Babcock, any discussion?
I, with that letter coming in late, that, that's definitely my comfortable, I feel better moving it to August 11.
Okay, awesome, so we have a motion, a second, all those in favor of that signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Okay, that passes unanimously as well, the motion, or the item is deferred until August 11. Next is 6.6, a, for the Coolidge Road and Coolidge Court discussion, we have David Haywood.
Thank you. So this request involves the development at the southeast corner of Coolidge and Lake Lansing, the Coolidge Court Shopping, Shopping Center. Council approved this development in December of 1986, for a 23,000 square foot shopping center, just over three acres, and allowed typical uses in the B5 zoning district. And with a couple of exceptions, there was a deed restriction that prohibited cooking or baking and fast food, and they also prohibited snow plowing between 10 p.m. and 7 a.m., and prohibited all Sunday sales. So the current request before you is to allow for, to remove that restriction on Sunday sales and allow for Sunday sales, which was a condition of their site plan, so this is technically a modification to their site plan approval. There were, have been multiple attempts to remove this condition in the past, I think, once in 1987, when that application was ultimately withdrawn, once in 1989, and once in 1995. All resulted in not removing the, the condition. And the planning commission reviewed this on July 8 with unanimous support, including seven conditions. Without it, we take any questions?
Okay, Councilmember Greg, did you have something?
Well, I know that there was a lot of, of angst from the adjacent residential community about this, and I watched, I feel like I watched, not the latest planning commission, but previous one, they had discussed this twice in a row. Maybe I watched this one, um, but I just, I, you know, I think that the, maybe, maybe Brookover can address some of this. I do feel some, you know, sympathy to the argument that this was zoned this way conditionally with, with this restriction in place. I think the major complaint that I heard from that neighborhood was not necessarily the Sunday hours, but the possibility of food being included in that, and so the deed restrictions as written have really addressed that concern? Or is that still possibly a problem?
Yeah, thank you for reminding me of that, I didn't mean to skip over the comments from the public. And that's been a common thread through the years since this development went in place. Originally, I think the concern was, I think residents would have rather seen it as before, the zoning district before largely office use, it would be less of an impact as compared to the B5 district. So there was a compromise struck by the deed restrictions, the restrictions on snow plowing and such, and the removal of Sunday sales to kind of try to get it closer to a, a district that would be more compatible with the concerns of the residents. And, and those concerns have kind of echoed through the years, and certainly are a part of the discussion that we heard at the planning commission and that you see in your packet.
Mayor, could I interrupt for one second?
Absolutely, go ahead.
I'm not sure if there were any people who were still in the meeting who wanted to speak on this issue that may have mentioned it earlier, do you recall?
You know what, you, you are, you are definitely correct on that, and I believe Mayor Byer had indicated that was okay. I know that George Brookover is, is one of the people that is actually on, yeah. Yeah, so Nicole or Emily, would you mind letting George Brookover speak?
Mayor, if I could ask a question?
Absolutely.
Does this apply to the five-minute rule as well, or do you not want the clock involved?
Um, let's, let's say no for right now, just, just in case other councilmembers have questions, I don't wanna, I don't wanna, but I appreciate the, the question, thank you, Jackson.
Well, thank you for your time and your effort tonight, I realize this has been a tough meeting, and I thank you all for sticking around. I, I don't want to repeat, there's, there's a lot of stuff, I think, that answers whatever questions you have in the packet, but let me just reiterate a few things. Under the current applicable ordinances, we respectfully submit this modification is appropriate for at least the following reasons. First, nothing in the B5 Community Retail Sales District prohibits or limits Sunday hours. Second, no zoning category in East Lansing requires Sunday hours restrictions. Third, modifications to, to an approved site plan are expressly permitted under the current ordinance. Fourth, nothing in the master plan, the current master plan, contemplates restrictions on days of operation. Next, Sunday hours are consistent with the surrounding commercial properties. It goes without saying, you all have been around long enough to realize that this area has developed geometrically since 1986, and so almost all the surrounding commercial properties have Sunday hours, and that information was itemized for the planning commission and is in your packet, there's a map and a listing of the other businesses. And so we don't think the modification would result in a significant change to the site plan. Now, going to a couple of things that were raised, first of all, the, the deed restriction was created by Mr. Yaden's predecessor in his office back in 1986. We've already indicated in a letter to a number of people in the neighborhood that we would abide by the deed restriction, we, we really can't do anything else. So that would restrict the food situation. We had a lot of dialogue with the residents since last fall. We had a variety of responses, I think you actually just received a letter in the last few days. Some people supported, some people didn't support, some people were in the middle. As far as I can tell, there was no official position from the Neighborhood Association.
I, yeah, there, there hasn't been, to my knowledge.
And, and there's just been a lot of things changed, and I don't, I, I, I hate to characterize it this way, but I think part of this whole situation is the proof is kind of in the pudding. To the extent some residents, a few living next door, raised concerns, they raised concerns about things like dumpster hours and lawn hours and things like that, which we're already observing without conditions. So I'd simply ask that, because the proposed modification does not result in a significant change to the site plan, and it would be consistent with the controlled growth allowed to occur in the area by the city since 1986, we respectfully request approval of this modification to allow Sunday hours of operation consistent with the planning commission's vote and the, the letter that they forwarded to you. And obviously, if you have any questions, I'll answer them, or I'll try to answer them.
So I have, I have a question that might be for you and might be for Mr. Haywood. I know that the hours for Sunday were specified in that planning commission. In the original deal, were hours of operation overall specified that Monday through Saturday?
No, they weren't.
Okay, is that a, I'll, I'll look to Mr. Haywood and maybe Mr. Yaden, is that something that we could put in there? As a, you know, throughout the, the normal week?
Oh, I, I guess you could, I just wanted to clarify that one of the seven conditions is to, is to set the hours for Sunday.
Yeah, 9 a.m. through 8 p.m.?
Correct.
Okay.
Could I respond to that, Mayor?
Absolutely.
So, let me respond this way, you know, what, in a, in a ideal world, it would be nice to have some professional offices in four of our vacant spots, and, you know, a professional might be an attorney, might be an accountant, and if, I suggest, I suggest to you, if you start trying to restrict hours during the rest of the week, people like Mr. Yaden and I, I don't, I don't know what open means. So I, I, I use my office at late hours and early hours, sometimes for meetings with people who can't meet any other time. An accountant during tax season, my accountant, I'm dropping stuff off at her office at 10, 11 o'clock at night. So I see an issue with trying to restrict hours, and I think those kinds of hours restrictions are very, very rare in East Lansing, and usually apply to a different kind of use, so.
Okay, I appreciate the response, Councilmember Greg?
I think, to me, the, the concern about hours would be is if there was some sort of business that was operating high-traffic late at night. And I think, like, right now in that strip mall, there's a bird seed place, a
So, yeah.
dry cleaner, possibly, I think, a nail salon, and then, like, a quarter of the whole strip mall is Country Stitches, which is like, you know, quilt store. So, you know, although some employee might stop by late at night to unload something at one of those stores or some, you know, I don't think there's gonna, and then, I think there's five open retail bays, if I counted correctly, when I drove by this afternoon. I just don't see, with the deed restrictions on use, I don't see any type of business moving in there that would have a particularly heavy late-night traffic that would cause problems.
Okay.
That, that's not as important to me, I don't, I see the point, but I don't think it's a, a concern.
Sure. Did you have something else, or should I go to Councilmember Babcock?
That's, that's
or Councilmember Babcock?
I'm, I'm sorry, I think our, all of us who are still in this meeting, our minds are a little scrambled. Mr. Brookover, or perhaps Mr. Haywood, could you go over the hour? Mr. Brookover or perhaps Mr. Haywood, could you go over the hours of operation for us that would be allowed one more time? I'm sorry.
Well, I think it's in a referral letter from the planning commission. I, I believe it's, uh, nine A M to, um, ten P M, but un- unfortunately, I have so many papers here, I don't get that letter right in front of me.
On Sunday, it's from nine to eight.
Nine to eight, thank you.
Okay, and then just to confirm, I'm sorry, I took this down in notes before the meeting and I think this came from the planning commission, is that correct, Mr. Haywood? Uh, no dumpster activity between ten P M and seven A M and no landscaping activity between ten P M and seven A M? Was that a note I made from somewhere else, or is that in the planning commission version?
Uh, they talked about that, um, but they, they did not come to make a formal recommendation to change that component.
And as I said earlier, for thirty-four years, we've already been observing those kinds of hours. Essentially, our contracts with our providers already contain those kinds of hours.
Okay, and, um, I, I'm, so I'm, I, the only reason why I asked the question is because, you know, I know that, I was on the, the P N A call recently, it might not have been the most recent meeting, but, um, where this was discussed and, you know, I think the folks were generally okay with the Sunday hours and they were worried about, you know, businesses that were going. And I think council member Greg put it into good perspective, um, high-traffic businesses might be there among, you know, concerns about trash unloading and offloading and, and some other things. But, um, so I, you know, I was looking towards maybe if there were, uh, or was a somewhat of a, a middle ground on that. So, um, Mr. Haywood, would you mind, uh, talking us through, because we don't have many people on the call today from the Pinecrest neighborhood, just some of their concerns that were brought up? Again, I, I'm asking the same question from the item that I mistakenly clicked on before. But, um, items that were brought up at planning commission that, um,
Yeah, I mean, we've, I think we've talked about them all, really. I mean, they're down to, um, you, you know, the cover, the, the, the wide range of things, the concern about, um, uses that might come in that, that create uh, nuisance activity, um, odors, um, but those are addressed by the deed. Hours of operation for, uh, the snow plows and, uh, trash pickup, uh, traffic generated, um, those kinds of things. And, and, and so just to give you a little anecdotal information, a lot of times, or we, we've heard, heard those complaints and, um, you know, staff does not have, I think the only complaints that I'm aware are, aware of are related to, um, the snow removal. I think we have.
And that was, that was highlighted in the planning commission.
Yeah, I think we had one or two this past winter and maybe, maybe one before that. But certainly since I've been here and with the almost four years that I've been here, I don't think we've had hardly any complaints except for the landscaping on, on this development at all.
Awesome.
With regard to traffic, uh, even if there was a high, high-traffic user, the site is not accessed through the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Now, with the exception of, uh, Coolidge Road itself. But I think that's designed for some fairly heavy traffic. I think it's a four-lane road, uh, near there, so. Um, so, um, anyway, um, I'm not sure that they, other than Coolidge Road, they would see any additional traffic.
Sure, thank you for that explanation, Mr. Haywood. Thanks for seconding with us all night. Um, so I will, at this point, then make a, uh, motion to approve the application subject to the seven conditions listed in the planning commission referral letter on July ninth, twenty twenty. Do I have a second?
A second.
Seconded by council member Greg, um, any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Councilmember Greg, or sorry, Babcock, was that in favor? Okay, um, all those opposed, same sign. Seeing none, that passes unanimously. Um, I'll, I'm gonna take a moment of personal privilege, uh, before we end the meeting here. Just to talk very briefly, thank you, Mr. Haywood, for being on for that.
Thanks, thank you for your time tonight, people.
Thank you, Mr. Brookover. This was an extremely difficult meeting, um, and I think that it will be felt in the city for a long after the close of this meeting. I wanted to state, um, now that I am in, uh, I suppose the mayor's seat, this will be my, my first and, and only term as mayor. Um, I do not intend on running for reelection. And while I will take this role and do my absolute best to serve the people of East Lansing, I do not intend to run for reelection for this role. To members of city staff, um, to members of the community, um, I want to say that we will continue, we will persevere and we will keep in the fight, um, to make East Lansing um, a beautiful place for all and continue the great work that city staff has done on that and, and keep moving it forward. I want to thank council member Greg, or sorry, council member Meadows and the mayor Byer, um, former mayor, um, Meadows, for all their work on the council. Um, I want to thank the city attorney for all his work as well. Um, but I, I really want to highlight, um, just the, the, the amount of knowledge and the amount of, of assistance that, that, um, both members of council that, that resigned tonight, um, have given me in the past and, um, advice that they have. And I, I wanted to highlight just really, um, how much of an impact that it made on me, even when we didn't agree on every issue. Um, I want to thank the city manager for his leadership, um, through the city and I'm sure we will be talking in the future about, about appointments to the council and about how to move forward. And I'm, I'm going to request, uh, the city manager that, that we start a conversation tomorrow for me to go around and talk to members of of city staff, um, both in managerial roles and in, in, uh, different roles to talk about expectations and to, to listen to those members that I, um, am now going to be responsive to. So, um, again, I want to thank everybody for being on this meeting. Um, this is an extremely difficult meeting and I will be feeling it for many, many weeks to come. Um, but we will persevere, we will move forward and I am, I am optimistic of the future of the city of East Lansing. And so let's, let's do it. Let's get what we need to do done. And let's move East Lansing in the right direction. So thank you all for being on this. That was the last item on the agenda. Um, the meeting is now adjourned.
All right, thank you.
Good night.